And welcome to the November 28, 2022, meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. First off, just a remote meeting notice that I still need to mention. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in-person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Remote participation by the public for the public comment agenda item, the public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raise hand feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or video to make a comment or ask a question. In all cases, whether in person or remote, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Every vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Community Television Government Channel. I'll begin with the roll call of the board to make sure everyone's here and can hear me. First off, Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hassenger.
I'm here.
Ms. Hassenger.
Present.
Mr. Van Keterman.
Present.
Associate Member Moore McCormack.
Present.
I am here as well. Our interim planner Eve Tapper.
I'm here.
And staff as well as Natalia Allward. Saw her unmute, so I know she heard me. I'm not hearing her anymore.
She's unmuted, but we cannot hear her.
That's not working either.
There we go. And anyone else will recognize them as an appropriate item comes in front of us. The first agenda item as always for us is public input. If anyone has anything to bring to the board's attention or mention that's not already on the agenda in another spot, now would be the time to do so either in person or via the Zoom raise hand feature. Seeing none, that'll bring us to our first action item. A continuation of the Grafton Land Trust Trail and Drainage with regards to Stillwater Estates, 11 Wheeler Road. So, let's see. Who wants to lead us off of where we stand on this today?
I'll be happy to speak to that, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Rob Knappick. I represent the developer of Stillwater Estates in, at 11 Wheeler Road. And as you know, we've been before you multiple times. This item appears on the agenda because an abutting landowner, the Grafton Land Trust, expressed some concern about the drainage infrastructure at the project. I think in summary, their concerns were whether or not it was constructed in accordance with the plan and whether or not it was functioning as it should. And I, I hope and assume that the land trust concerns have been addressed and allayed because, as you know, Mr. Chairman, the board has a number of reports from your consulting engineer Graves Engineering. One dated November 4th, 2022, one dated November 10th, 2022. And in brief summary, the number, November 4th letter from Graves to the planning board says essentially that the purpose of it was to determine whether the drainage infrastructure has been constructed in accordance with the plans and is operating at a capacity typical for this stage of construction. Mr. Walsh of Graves concluded that by and large, the answer is yes, it had been constructed in accordance with the plan and was functioning as designed. He however, made a couple of suggestions as to how the drainage struck, uh, infrastructure might be modified during construction. So as to further address the concerns and those suggestions included installing or creating the four bay and installing some additional piping at the inlet to the outlet control structure that was designed to trap sediment that found its way into the basin. Uh, and also installing two rows of additional sediment control at, at the top of the basin. In his November 10th report to the board, captioned site visit report, he notes and reports to the board that those measures were installed. So based on all that, I'd like to think, as I said, that the concerns of the land trust have been addressed and allayed and that the, as evidenced by your engineers' site visits and reports, the drainage is constructed substantially in accordance with the plan and is functioning as it should at this stage of construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Michael Suarda, 32 Barbara Jean Street, Grafton, representing the Grafton Land Trust. I disagree with most of what my colleague has just said. I'd like to lay out a few items as to what still remains outstanding to try to be a bit proactive. At this point, regardless of Graves or any analysis they've done, I'll speak to that in a minute. I don't think it's as rosy a picture as my colleague has, has just mentioned. They do not have an easement to drain over our property. I mentioned that the first time we appeared before this board back in September, and I'm going to mention it again. They're channeling water onto our property. You can't channel water onto property unless you've got an easement. You can let it drain naturally, but this isn't a natural drain. They're collecting from a large piece of land and funneling all of that into one piece which empties onto our trail. I've cited in my bogus letter to the board, the Conway case, you can take a look at that for the standards. And it's certainly part of your board's obligation to make sure that there are not deleterious effects to neighbors. So that's, that starts off, Graves doesn't address that. I did look at the Graves reports and I must say, it was a lot, it was very optimistic for the, for the developer. He, he, he indicates that the Graves report on the 10th indicated that everything was done. And in my reading of the Graves report on the thing that we have been most concerned with is the four bay construction, which we raised last time, that there really wasn't a four bay there. Graves in its letter of the fourth was very specific and said that the, the Gambian wall berm had not yet been installed at that date um, to create the four bay impoundment in the storm waters basin inlet. There was a request to delete, uh, delete the Gambian requirement and allow some type of a rip rap to replace that. Uh, he does, Graves letter goes on to say, provided that a four bay empowerment is still created in accordance with the layout and volumetric consideration shown on the plans. If you go to Graves letter of, now they, I want to make note, he was very specific. It had to be done by the layout and volumetric, his letter, his words, very important factor. You'll note in the, in his follow-up site visit report, his item one, construct the four bay basin. That was requirement number one. It says a four bay has been constructed of rip rap at the drainage systems discharge point to the storm water basin. That's it. He doesn't say whether it complies with the volumetric requirements. He doesn't say if, if fills out the layout that it was supposed to have. Uh, we did have, given the lateness of this being filed with the board and the Thanksgiving holiday, our engineer, Mr. Hill, did not have a chance to fully review everything. But based upon his brief analysis, uh, this doesn't even come close to matching the volume that needed to be required. By their own reports, they're supposed to have, I think, 3,200 cubic feet of storage in that impoundment area. We wonder if it even covers the third of that volume as it's currently constructed. So we're happy that they've done it because there's some mitigation there and that's, that's better than nothing, but it certainly doesn't meet the standards. And I think, you know, Graves letter very specifically admits the fact that it complies, which it mentioned in its prior letter. I want to also address in, in general, whether or not, if in fact this complies, whether or not that's a change that the board can allow as a minor adjustment to the plan. Given the fact that we've had drainage issues on our property and I think it's, it's vitally important that there be a full hearing that it be considered a major change. Other people in the community can come and speak about the effect. I mean, I think everybody realizes this is one of the most popular trails in town, if not the greater Grafton area. And to have further input from people about whether or not that's a major change, I think would be important for the board. I do want to also update you, as I have promised I would do at my last meeting, as far as where we are in settlement discussions. Uh, we had to have some back and forth between Attorney Knappick and myself. Those broke off on the 16th. Um, I, we had put a proposal out. We had some discussion back and forth and was waiting for a counterproposal to come back. I basically set a deadline of the 16th, just so we weren't waiting till the last minute before we came before the board. We didn't hear anything before the 16th as to our final proposal. I, just to give you an idea of what the general discussions were without getting into tremendous detail. GLT had proposed that the disultation barrier be built in the drainage basin in accordance with the Gambian barrier. Um, you know, certainly if our engineer tells us that a rip rap of a proper volumetric measurement and, uh, location is substitutes for that, that would be fine. Depends on, throw an engineer and what they, they would say. We wanted to have a widening and lengthening of the rip wraps at the pipe outlet and also at the 100 year flood area. There's been, I think, generally, I think there was some agreement that we, that could probably be accommodated in some fashion. We wanted a contribution of less than 50% of the cost of us up to GLT putting in, stabilizing the trail system. We actually did get a, an estimate from, Rob?
Mark Forge.
Mark, Mark Forge, who's a local.
MSF landscaping in Grafton.
That cost came in at over $40,000. Part of the, part of the issue with the, with the trail is, given the issues we now have with it being declared part of a system that has to be upgraded to a, to accommodate disability access. If we don't touch the trail, we're fine. If we touch it, there's no middle ground. We have to go up and make it comply, which increases, increases the cost. Not that we want to increase the cost, but it increases the cost. Uh, and the last item was, we were going to prepare a mutual acceptable easement that would grant them the legal right to drain property, the drain that will outlet onto our property. It's unfortunate that this stuff has broken off. It's unfortunate, I think, that the, the developer, rather than focusing on getting a settlement with us that would stop us from being a Monday night occurrence here more than like Monday night football. And let them get on to build and let us get on and, you know, take care of our trail system. Because of that, we, there's been discussion among the top levels of the Grafton Land Trust. And I do want to submit, I'm going to submit this letter to you tonight. But the letter also contains a petition to request that the board exercise its 41 section, 81 W powers to revoke or amend or modify the subdivision. That's not a step that the land trust took lightly, but with the stalled negotiations and more important seeming to be placed on getting in temporary rip wraps to allow them to get a lot release. It seemed to be the only method that we could use. So I'll, if I may, I'll provide the board with copies. Uh, with that, I'll conclude by saying, look, we've worked closely with them previously with regard to land swaps. The Grafton Land Trust does not oppose the subdivision. It opposes the drainage going on to our property. We'd like to solve this in an expeditious fashion as businessmen. Get this done, let them go build, make their profit, and let us have a protected trail that everybody can use in the community. Now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Me? Mike?
Yep. Hi, Bob.
Can I sit here?
Yeah.
You can't hear him. Thank you.
I just. One second, Bob, I think those sound cut out somehow.
He's looking lovely.
Are we done? Do we have no sound in the room here?
I think we have no sound in the room.
Oh, no.
I tried to turn the volume up in the room and I think I muted it. One second. Just take a very brief formal recesses to grab stuff.
I thought I heard Linda's voice.
Uh, okay.
Here she is.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
You can hear Prabhu.
Yeah. Sorry, Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob? Can you hear me?
Yes. I heard you just now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we kept up.
Where'd I hear that before?
I don't know. Was it Verizon that did it?
Yep.
Well, then I know where, um, the draining jism that you say they have to have and they don't. What recourse is there outside of what you're doing with us now? Could you bring an action to, against them?
Could we? Yes. We've already issued a cease and desist letter to them, which they've ignored.
Well, then you have further steps that you can take.
Can we, can we privately take steps? Sure. But it doesn't change the fact that the board has approved the plan with water going onto a place that there's no legal, there's no legal right to put the water. I mean, that's a separate issue. I can, can I pursue privately? Sure. But it doesn't change the position of the plan, which was.
I'm, I'm just looking at, there's some things that we can do. But it's kind of tricky for us. It's, it's not a, not a, not a familiar path and.
It has been done before in town, I know, with Meadow Lane, according to some of my planning board historians friends.
Meadow Lane. Which one is that?
It was a revocation.
Oh, could, I don't remember why. I, I can't picture where it is right now. In any case, I, I don't recall anything like this. And we're sort of jumping into, jumping into fairly deep water. But, um, and so should it be resolved this way or should it be resolved the other way? Is what I'm thinking about.
I want to, if, if I could, Mr. Hassenger, one of the things we've done, we're willing to give them an easement to drain. That's not, it's not something we're imposed to doing, but it's got to be part of taking care of the potential erosion and the erosion we've seen on the site.
No, I understand all that.
I'm, I'm not a litigator, so for me, going to court is not something I prefer to do. But the guys who do it love it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
Um, okay, well, other, not an easy case. Uh, who else has questions?
I presume you want to.
Yeah.
Make some comments.
Thank you. I, I too, on behalf of my client, would rather resolve this. It's presented to you as, well, you know, we made this reasonable proposal and it was ignored. It wasn't. We made a counterproposal and in fact, that was ignored. Um, but be that as it may, yes, we're some distance apart. Part of it relates to money. I mean, there's no question they've already been paid in consideration of any potential damage to the trail. There is no damage to the trail. The Graves letter reports the same. I assume each of you, given the nature of this and the fact that it's been going on for a while and the fact that the, uh, part of the trail that is in question and the detention basin outlet are very accessible from the, um, the parking lot. So I assume that each of you has seen for yourself that there is no damage to the trail. So any purported damage to the trail hasn't happened. Any notion that there might be damage to the trail at some indefinite time in the future is speculative and remote and contrary to what is before you, which is a subdivision designed by a civil engineer, reviewed by the planning board's consultant, reviewed by the conservation commission's consultant, um, complies with every regulation of the planning board and the storm water regulations. And now you're told, you have confirmation that it's built in accordance with the plan. So for someone with all due respect to stand before you who's not an engineer and say, well, it's damaging our property, it doesn't seem to make sense. Everything you have, the weight of what you have is directly in opposite to that. But nonetheless, I made a call to Attorney Sewardra as recently as today. I apologize if you didn't get the message, Mike. It was admittedly late in the day. And my simple voicemail message was, you know, do you think we can bridge this gulf? So I have no doubt that my client will authorize me to continue to try to bridge that gulf. Whether we can, it still remains to be seen. I won't address each of the points that he made because I think I would just become repetitive, except to say two things. First, we steadfastly reject the notion that an easement is necessary. The law is inconsistent with that. And the fact of the matter is that the drainage report itself confirms that the water going to the land trust property post-development is less than the water going to the land trust property pre-development because the detention basin functions as an infiltration basin to reduce both the volume and the rate of runoff. So how can this project cause damage to the land trust property? And how can we need an easement for something that already happens? We don't. I'm confident of it. And I'm also confident that that's probably the reason why town council said, I believe, Mr. McGoldrick reported to you that town council's view of the easement was that's a private matter. And as Mr. Hassenger suggests, they have a remedy. They could sue to enforce that, that right. And the second point that I'll make is that you have, as I said, you have everything that you have from the applicant's engineer, going back to the original submittal. You have everything that you have from your engineer, who is presumably a trusted source. And I don't think I need to belabor the point that Graves Engineering is among the most well-regarded reviewing engineers in the area. You don't have anything from the land trust engineer. He hasn't appeared here. You have nothing in writing. What you have is that our engineer said this and our engineer said that. I assume that that isn't the standard, that the planning board would ever rely upon somebody simply relaying what an engineer said. And that's not to cast any aspersions on Norman Hill, who I know very well, and I regard him highly, and I'm sure you do as well. But he hasn't appeared. He hasn't produced anything in writing that says that the Graves report is wrong or inconsistent with what you've been told. So for all those reasons, you know, as I said in my initial remarks, I'm surprised to hear that there's still an issue. If there is, there is. I'm sure I'll pick up the phone and talk to Attorney Sewardra in the days to come in the hope that we can work it out. But we do have a gulf to bridge. Thank you.
All right. Okay, for me to speak?
Yeah.
This is Rob Aberg, 43 South Street, representing Grafton Land Trust. So in talking with engineer Norm Hill today, he said he didn't need to speak because the facts speak for themselves. Okay? So here is the storm water management report and standard four for water quality treatment volume says that the silt four bay requires 3,200 cubic feet. This is on page three dash three, which is on the PDF. And so that is this drawing that you guys signed that says survey plan book nine 60, plan six 84. And here's the highlights of what's required for that four bay. And 3,200 cubic feet is not what we see that got constructed. Now, there is no as-built. So Mr. Graves, uh, sorry, Mr. Walsh from Graves Engineering did not provide an as-built. So it cannot be claimed that it meets the specification. And judging by I, now this is something, can I give this to you guys?
We'll have to put on the record and keep it, but yes.
Yeah. That's a photograph of the work performed recently that was reviewed by Jeff Walsh. And if you say it's 20 feet by 20 feet or 25 feet by 25 feet, and it looks about two feet high, 20 times 20 times two, you don't need to be a licensed engineer to know that that's 800 cubic feet. If it's 25 by 25 by three, this is still less than half of what's required for a silt four bay to control the silt. This is something that, once the town takes ownership of this property, the DPW is going to have to maintain that. Farther down in the storm water report, the maintenance manual currently estimates $1,150 a year maintenance cost. If it was built to the plan that's shown there. If it's these loose rocks, they're going to fill with silt. And it says in the report, manual, manually clear, this is going to be another expense for the town to, and I pay my taxes. We're going to have to pay for all of this work to keep this thing clean and clear. And it's already filled up in just a couple of storms and had to be redone. So I, I think it, this is nothing to do with, um, the land trust. This just is something that needs to be built properly. And I did not see anywhere in the Graves report where it was built per the plan with an as-built set of objective data proving it. It's subjective. That's all I had. Did you guys have any questions?
Just a comment that the Graves Engineering is not responsible for providing an as-built plan.
Okay.
It's not within their purview. It is ultimately, it is the applicant's, the developer's responsibility to provide the as-built plan when the project is complete. Now, what seems to be at, at the, a point of dispute here is whether that that particular aspect of the construction is, is per further requirement for the cubic feet, et cetera. And so you're asserting that it is not, does not conform to the plans. I'm assuming the developer assumed it would, would, would claim the opposite. Graves did not in their report evaluate that. And so we have no, we have no really, you know, no sort of independent way of assessing which point of view is correct on that.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. Anything else?
I think you're clear for now.
Um, I have a question for Mike.
Go ahead.
Whom ever, actually. Let's say this goes through the way it is and without an easement. What happens when the town accepts the subdivision? If it ever said, does that make the town, um, a party to the litigation you could bring?
Uh, conceivably. Conceivably, yes, but I can't give a definitive answer, Bob. I really, I really have not been focused. I've really been focused on trying to get something settled. I really haven't looked that far down.
Right, well, I'm. I don't think this is the best, at least the way this is working so far, this is not the best forum to sort this out. One person says it, it does, and he says the other person doesn't say it doesn't, and the other person isn't here. And I don't know. I, I, I just don't, I think this issue is better suited to someplace else. I wish I had seen your letter today, my, making a formal request to the board for, was it 81 W?
Yep.
Um, because if that's, if that's on the. Because if that's, if that's on the record and with us, that makes me question whether we should release anything.
And if I may, just, I want to address just two points. I do want to speak about the drainage and the need for an easement. I would agree with counsel that Massachusetts law is that if you are taking water and you're basically putting the same volume of water at the same speed, at the same velocity, and not concentrated, if they build a subdivision and they accomplish that, that's fine. I would not be here having objection on this point. But if you channel that water, even if it's the same amount of volume arising, arriving on our property, but you channel it such that the velocity and the volume at one particular point exceeds what was there before, which this clearly does, because there was not a drainage pipe for an entire subdivision hitting that portion of this trail. It's not dispersed water. It's concentrated water. The court, it's clear. And I, with all due respect to my brother counsel, I, it's clear that they need an easement. And if they don't, for purposes of the, Bob asked about the town's issue later, if later on you're draining onto this property, and you're, you probably, if it was a town, you need to take a drainage easement. You wouldn't just say, we can drain there. You take a drainage easement. The town had this and needed that area. They would use them in a domain and take an easement. They wouldn't just say, hey, sorry, we're going to put a pipe there. So I disagree with counsel on that. And just for the litigation purposes, this matter should not go to litigation. This is, this is a business matter. With all, I have had a great deal of difficulty figuring out, as all attorneys try to do. I'm not sure where the developer's going, because this is a matter that it's come down to relatively, I think, short dollars. The other issues can, I think, be worked out. We've got a $43,000 budget that we're going to have to pay to get this state place stabilized. $43,000. We haven't even asked for half of that, less than half of that. We had an offer on the table for $20,000. We have retained that, even now that we have an actual estimate that's higher than what we thought it was going to be. We tried to work in good faith. I'd like to continue. I really, I don't want to have this thing go to court, because I think courts, courts make decisions. I like to, you know, craft my settlements and craft stuff as a working attorney. I hope we're able to do that. Again, reluctantly, when we filed the petition to revoke or modify, wasn't really what we're, you know, wanted to do. And Bob, and to the board, apologies for the delay. We just got the report from Graves on Tuesday. It was a holiday week. We looked at the report, saw this tendency to go toward Riprap versus Gabion. We wanted to look at that and at least have a chance to talk to our engineer before we could put anything into writing. So I'm here for any questions. But I think the best thing that this board personally could do is, I think it could, like the UN, and put some pressure to get something settled. Because there's a settlement here to be made. My client's going for less than half of the amount it's going to cost them to take care of a problem that the developer created. I, I'm not sure that there's much more good faith that we can show. Thank you.
I'll be quick, if I may.
I'll let Bob go first.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
I, the, was it $13,000 was not, to me, money to deal with this problem on the trail. It was money to help the land trust enhance this facility for the public. That made it a public benefit that we could vote for. As it turns out, I'm not sure, I wasn't happy with that vote anyway. It was too close a question that we were dealing with. So I don't even agree with, and nobody agrees with anybody about now. But I don't, I think we have to, I don't know, I think we have to continue this and look into the process that the land trust is asking us to do, eighty-one W, see what, you know, learn some stuff about that, what we, how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, again, with all due respect to Mr. Aberg, to my knowledge, he's not a civil engineer. So for him to opine on his own that by observation the sediment for bay isn't constructed in accordance with the standards seems virtually annuity. In fact, my calculations are that if the sediment for bay is about 40 by 30 by two and a half feet deep, which visibly it is, that in fact is 3,200 feet. So I'm here to tell you that visually, it does appear to be to, to meet the standard set forth in the report. Again, I'm not going to belabor the easement issue, but I ask you to ask yourself if in all of your time on, serving on the board, and I know that some have been here longer than others, some have been here for a very long time, have you ever heard or ever imposed a condition, or even had discussion before you about an easement for drainage being required under the same or even similar circumstance? And I'll hazard a guess that the answer is no. And the reason the answer is no is because I strongly disagree with Attorney Sir Wurdr. An easement simply is not necessary. We're not channeling water. Even if we were, it would still not require an easement. The rule briefly is called the reasonable use rule, and it was adopted in, I think, 1987. The court said that that controls the diversion of water in Massachusetts. This reasonable use rule, formerly it was called the common enemy rule. Water was a common enemy to all. You had the right to block it off, to make it go elsewhere, even if it caused damage, because it was an enemy. The court abrogated that rule in, I'm sorry, it was, yes, I think it was 1987. The case is Tucker versus Bedoin, seventy-eight. I transpose the numbers. When they announced this reasonable use rule, and they said, as long as landowners were making reasonable use of their land and acting reasonably, then there was no liability for the discharge of stormwater onto adjoining properties. So as I wrote to Attorney Sir Wurdr in a pretty exhaustive letter back on July eighth, the trust acted reasonably in connection with the design and construction of the project. It hasn't enjoyed, hasn't interfered with the trust being the applicant, has not interfered with the land trust property. There's been no harm to the land trust property. It's in the Graves report. You can see it yourself. So for all those reasons, we, again, reject the idea that an easement is necessary. Not only is it not necessary, but the point is, it should not be reason for this board to withhold a lot release or delay these proceedings. They've gone on for some time. We've been responsive. The applicant and his contractor have addressed the Graves report. The evidence you have before you is that the drainage works. Is there time to continue to work with the land trust? There is. And will we do that? Yes. I'll stand before you and commit to that. But for the board to withhold or somehow pause the process merely because a request was made to withdraw the approval, or rescind the approval, is a very drastic measure, considering what's before you in the way of evidence, and considering that the standard for rescinding subdivision approval isn't merely because somebody, some of butter, is complaining about some remote and speculative possibility that might happen in the future, which is what's happening. But rather, you have to have some evidence that the project is not constructed in accordance with the plan. You don't have that. You have the opposite of that. Again, I won't belabor the points. I could, but I'll resist the urge to do so and conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, I'm just gonna go to you.
Sorry, I had a question. So I am neither a lawyer nor an engineer, and I've been in the town for all of about two weeks. But I'm, I'm trying to figure out, and so I came into this in the middle. What exactly is the, what are you asking, what is somebody asking the planning board to do as part of this hearing? I understand that later on, we're going to discuss potential release of lots and the like. But what is, what is this hearing asking the planning board to do? And you may have gone over this in another meeting, but I, I wasn't here, so.
I'll respond on behalf of the applicant. The applicant's asking the planning board to find, based on the reports from Graves Engineering, nothing more than what's set forth in those reports, which is that the project is constructed substantially in accordance with the plan. The drainage infrastructure is functioning as it should at this stage of construction. So therefore, the project should proceed in the normal course, which is continue construction, issue lot releases. Now, as you mentioned, Mr. Robbins, it's not Graves' job to provide an as-built. In fact, they note in their letter that now is not the time. As you well know, that's much later in the process. So there's another, you know, perhaps safeguard for the town and the land trust, if and when it should come to pass that an as-built demonstrates that, you know, maybe the sediment for bay should be slightly enlarged, or maybe this slope should be changed. There's an opportunity to do that. But to not do that now, to not proceed now merely because there's not an as-built, again, is not reason enough to do it. So to answer your question, the developer is asking the board to find that the project has been constructed as it should for this stage of construction, and to simply proceed in the norm, to be allowed to proceed in the normal course.
And is that something that often happens with regard to subdivisions? I thought that the planning board approves a subdivision, if the planning board approves a subdivision, then their next course of action is the release of lots or whatever. But I've never seen interim steps, so.
It's usually a mere formality.
Yeah. In, in this particular case, the land trust has brought, had brought in what they perceived as an issue to the attention of the board. They brought the, you know, request, you know, formally tonight with a, with a letter that will have entered in the record.
Oh, okay. I didn't see the letter.
It's just to your right.
Oh.
Anyway, you set that up, but.
Oh, I see.
For eighty-one W, to use that to rescind.
Okay.
The approval. And they're concerned about, you know, the board making any forward steps, you know, in favor of this development proceeding, you know, until the issue that the land trust perceives is strained out.
Okay.
Did I cover that well, Mrs. Wurdr?
You know what, I was gonna say, but I think, honestly, I think you've covered, I think you've covered it sort of well. And if, if you have questions.
I don't know what he's saying.
If, if the interim plan, if she has any questions with regard to position, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fire an email or whatever.
I was just trying to figure out what is within the planning board's jurisdiction to do, so that we can at least focus the conversation on what they have a right to do. So that was my question.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, you may.
Hi, Lynda Hutchins, Three Spanish River Road, and recent board member to the Grafton Land Trust. I just wanted to point out and bring to the board's attention that the ultimate authority over stormwater here is Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, and that's implemented by our Town Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions, it's about 38 pages long, addressing the subdivision. And they have a process for accepting the results. There's also a process to appeal to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection when we have a disagreement like we have. Maybe that's the better place for this to be worked out. And that request that the planning board wait until that process has been completed before, you know, while we have an active complaint on the board here. And that be kind of the, the place where that gets resolved before the board makes a determination here about releasing those lots. And as part of that order of conditions, what is required is for the applicant, the developer, to come forward with an as-built plan. And maybe they could do that just for the drainage portion of the project, and ask for certificate of compliance from the board. And that's a formal process. And to best of my knowledge, I checked with the Conservation Commission today, the applicant has not, the developer has not gone to the Conservation Commission with a request for that order of, that certificate of completion or compliance.
It's probably worth observing that the condition of drainage aspects of a project during construction is not generally expected to be exactly what it will end up as. There are, you know, there are interim measures that are taken during construction to control stormwater drainage, and those are, you know, the, so the interim measures that happen to be in place during construction are not necessarily the same as what we see when construction is completed, which is the point of getting the, that's at the point, it's the as-built plans and the certificate of compliance under the wetlands laws comes at the completion of construction. And we're not there yet. So we are, you know, we are the, we are at a, at a point which is during construction, and conditions are a little different during construction than they ultimately will be. And so the problem here is to, is, I think for this board, is to determine whether the drainage is appropriate for the point in construction where we're at right now. And as I said, that's, you know, things, things, things are done temporarily during construction a little differently than they are, you know, once the construction is complete. So we have to be cognizant of that fact. And, you know, I think largely this board would have to rely on, on our engineering consultant to advise us as to whether everything is as it should be expected to be at this stage of the project.
It just seems to me preliminary, or, or just too early premature, I guess, to release lots at this point when there is this open disagreement about the storm drainage system.
Well, it is, it is not premature to release lots while the project, the overall, you know, project is under construction. Because otherwise, how do you ever build the houses? It is appropriate to release lots when everything is as it should be at this particular stage of development.
So.
And that's really, I think, the point of contention, is whether or not everything is as it should be, considering where the project is at this stage of development.
So I think I'm gonna, I'll let you go if you need to assist in this, if that's just okay, is that I think what I'm hearing is basically overall concern that what Graves reported is either in compliance or is not in compliance, or is just not said to be in compliance as in absence of a statement. So that's something that I think that this board can just have to staff a very brief letter to Graves and say, you know, does this mean one of these three things? If not, is that something that you can articulate in more detail for the board? You know, on the, you know, regarding the riprap and the, you know, legitimacy as far as, you know, that meeting the standards that were called out. The, the second thing is the, what is our process for doing eighty-one W if the board wants to take that route to withdraw the approval? What is, what does the board need to find? What does the board need to do procedurally to actually do withdrawal? That's what we would need to get from the town council, I would presume, as well as would the board need to find something, would, to do that, would the board need to have statements from Conservation Commission or, you know, or along those lines? And additionally, possibly, possibly depending on the requirements for what the board's purview would be, is finding out from town council is an easement, something that the board needs to be aware of and have in some, you know, way for that.
Yeah. Council has in the past advised us that some aspects of this are really a dispute between two parties.
Yes.
And that continues to be the case. And, and I'm hearing both attorneys indicate that, you know, they, there is, there is an intent to continue, you know, speaking directly with one another to deal with that aspect of the dispute. Where it affects this board is, you know, is there any action that this board needs to take? And you've outlined, I'm not going to repeat what you just said, Justin, no need to. But that's going to worry. I do notice we have a hand raised on Zoom if you want to take that from the public.
Yes, I believe it would be.
Somebody you know.
To take, first off, Bob, I'll let you go.
Okay.
Been so long, it's hard to remember since I, I, I have a couple of problems. I have one lawyer, I have two lawyers who disagree about the law. Now, I don't know what the law is, and I don't think town council is actually in a position to make a definitive decision about that. She can advise us about where these things go, but either we have to figure it out, I mean, you know, make up our own minds where this falls in, in this easement situation, or a court does it. And a court is the place that this seems to expect to be resolved in. The other thing is, I hear, well, he says, that engineer said something, and this engineer said something else, and I think this, and, and so on. I want everybody in the room, so when we can add, when one side says something, like the bay, the, the four-bay is not big enough, the other side says it is, they can figure out where the discrepancy is and resolve it. We keep hearing one thing and passing it on, and a few weeks later, we get a message back that partly answers it. I think we have to have either, either some other, you know, a court or some other body needs to resolve this, or we've got to have a more rigorous process with the people we need here to make our own decision about all the engineering and whatnot.
All right. At this point, I will recognize the hand we have raised in Zoom, which just happens to be a member of my panel, just for full disclosure, Richard Whitney.
All right, if, if Rich would unmute himself, we could probably hear him speak.
Rich, are you there?
He appears to be muted.
Yes.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, what I'm hearing is Mike saying that we gotta come up with forty-three thousand dollars for the land trust. And they were having meetings back and forth here, from what I gather in the beginning of the meeting, and it broke down between the two attorneys. And it broke down between the two attorneys. And what it is, is, sounds like it's just money that is involved here. So, I mean, if that's what it is, you know, and trust is, I think, is in the wrong of holding, holding up a developer that's trying to develop a piece of property and bringing you guys in, in the middle of it. And it's not right. So to me, you know, work something out between both attorneys and keep the planning board out of it, because you guys have done all your work. And it just sounds like, you know, Mike says, well, we're gonna come up with forty-three thousand. Well, they can always go to the CPC and ask for the money there. That's all I gotta say. Thank you for letting me go.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
Could I speak?
You may.
I'm Brad Wright, Wright Realty. I'm a developer. I bought an approved subdivision, all stamped, recorded. We have letters from Graves, we've been going back and forth for a couple months. Graves gives us a report, we do everything that Graves looks for on the report. I've invested money because it's peer review, that I pay the bills, it's over five thousand dollars. Graves' report says everything's good, so I would like at least the, the board to vote on releasing lots one through six. Give me four lots now, and let's, let's go from there. But I can't afford to just keep coming back and forth here, so my request to the board would be release lots three through six tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
I was about to get to that. Is there any, before I bring the lot release requests for discussion for the board in particular, is there anything more the board needs to discuss, or anything new from the public in regards to the drainage issue with the Grafton Land Trust? I'm not seeing anything. So before, just before we move into the public hearings, I'll just continue with this particular project for the lot release request, which, as the developer just mentioned, is for lots three through six, I believe it was. The, there is the issue that we don't have the bond or surety, whichever.
We don't have the tripartite agreement. Well, we, I take that back. We got a copy of it this afternoon at like two-thirty, so we have not had our attorney, the town has not had an attorney look at it, so we can't act on it, and it's also not on the agenda.
Yep, thank you. So.
I'd like to shed some light on that if I could, Mr. Chairman, when, when you're ready.
So just with the, in light of that, not being ready for the board to have a reviewed copy of the board can use as in, you know, as a surety for the board to act on, there was a suggestion that was discussed with the building inspector, which was to, that the board could at its discretion give a release of the ability for the developer to have the basement, you know, the basement permits, so they could construct their basement, do the foundations, and, you know, achieve all that without having the full lot release. So that, that was, to my understanding, something that Mr. Berger expects to be able to achieve on his end, should the board wish to do it that way. Something you need before I let?
Yeah, well, um, is that a legally viable thing? All I know about is lot releases or not lot releases. I don't know about conditional lot releases. The other point that we'll get to in a minute, in, in a little bit, I think, is while there's the possibility of an 81W, I don't see how you release lots for construction that might, the plan that they're being built on is rescinded. I don't think, you, I think we have to have some legal input at least.
You've got something to add to what Bob decided before?
I'm, I am not an attorney. I, I, what I will tell you is that in talking to the building inspector who is on Zoom, if you want to speak to him directly, that he was, was, could issue a foundation-only permit so that the foundations could go in on those four lots before the ground freezes. And since we have in our hands a tri-party agreement, hopefully we will be able to do that at the next planning board meeting, and then you could decide to release the lots with that agreement in place. That, the, the, the building inspector is willing to issue those permits in order to do that without actually having the board vote to release the lots.
And that would be done on his initiative without any action on the part of the board?
No, the board, that is, if the board would like, if the board is okay with it, he will issue it, but the board has to act and say, we're not gonna release the lots until we have the tri-party agreement, but in the meantime, we will allow the, the foundation-only permits, and then the commissioner will issue those permits. If the board does not make that decision, he won't do it on his own.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, it's troubling to even hear that the board thinks it's possible to rescind the subdivision. I haven't seen Attorney Swatter's letter, I don't know what's in it, but Mr. Hassinger, who's, I assume, the longest-tenured member of the board, couldn't even remember an occasion when the board rescinded a subdivision. And yet, I'm sure that you've been involved with subdivisions that were, first of all, larger than this, more complicated than this, and more poorly constructed than this. As I said, I'm sure each of you has taken the opportunity to go by. You can see with your own eyes that the subdivision is constructed well, the granite curb is in, the roads are in, the infrastructure's in, the utilities are in. On that basis, we are quite confident that we're entitled to a release, not just for foundation permits, but for building permits for four of the six lots on the following basis. As you know, the applicant in the town entered into a covenant, and as you also know, 81U allows the applicant, the developer, at their choice, to provide the town surety in one of four different methods: a bond, a deposit of money in a passbook, a covenant, or a tripartite agreement. Or, an applicant can vary or combine those methods of giving the town that surety. And so initially, the developer in the town entered into a covenant, which said essentially, you don't get to build on any of the lots, Mr. Developer, until and unless you assure us that adequate access and utilities are constructed to a lot, then we'll release that lot from the covenant. That is the case with arguably all of the lots, but we're not gonna ask you to release all the lots, because then you wouldn't have anything. We're asking you to release four of the six of the lots, and we believe that there's a firm basis for doing it, and you have that before you. The numbers confirm that. By letter dated November seventeenth, Graves Engineering gave you an estimate of the cost back on November seventeenth to complete the subdivision, and the estimate was a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The total cost to construct the subdivision is seven hundred and two thousand dollars. So my math is that a hundred and forty-three thousand is about twenty percent, or one-fifth of the cost to construct the subdivision. So in theory, if there were five lots, let's say, on that basis, with four of the five, four fifths construction completed, we'd be entitled to four of the lots. You'd have one lot as additional surety, security. That's the case here, there's six lots. You'll have two lots as security. In addition, we tendered to the board today, not as a prerequisite to releasing lots, but, and I apologize if I didn't make it clear, as additional security, belt and suspenders, as you will, a tripartite agreement, which, as you know, is between the developer, the developer's lender, and the planning board. And it says essentially that the lender, Mutual One Bank, agrees that we're lending the developer money, we've got a bunch of it, we disperse it to developer over time, but don't worry, planning board, we're going to withhold the sum of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars until and unless you tell us to release it to the developer. So what we propose to you, and our basis for justifying the release of four of the six lots for building permits, is that the surety that you'll have is two of the lots to ensure completion of less than two-sixths or one-third of construction, based on your own numbers, and a tripartite agreement, belt and suspenders, if you will. Now, I understand that the board, I think you can discuss the tripartite agreement this evening, because it's under the general heading of surety, which is posted on your agenda, but I understand that you can't pass on the sufficiency of it, because it hasn't been reviewed by town council, but again, it's additional security, it's belt and suspenders. It wasn't tendered to the town as something instead of the covenant. So in summary, you have two lots remaining on the covenant to ensure completion of less than two-thirds, or, or two-sixths or one-third of the project, and you'll have a tripartite agreement, more than enough surety to ensure completion of the roadways and infrastructure. On that basis, I reiterate my client's request that the board vote to release four of the six lots for building permits, not just foundation permits. Thank you.
Bob, go ahead.
Okay. We can do this all night, I think. I'd rather not, I've got a headache. I guess where it came from. I, I, I think I'd be happy if we did two things tonight. One is to do as the building commissioner has suggested for the foundation permits, and the other is to request town council to advise us on this need for a, a, an easement. She may not be able to give a definitive answer, that's always hard without a court, but at least we'd have her advice as to where, what these law, what, what, what the prospects for the laws are, and, and have a better idea of where we're going. Let's suggest that we do those two, two things tonight.
I'd like to say something. One thing, we need to, just very quickly, something historical about this old site is that the only reason it went through the planning board was because of the agreement to not interfere with, with the trails, that they had to be maintained, that it couldn't damage the area at all, because technically, in the beginning, these houses are built on a subpar lot. I don't know if the builder's aware of that, but this was not an easy approval. The only reason it went through is in the consideration that the, the land trust said, okay, we'll accept this if you assure us that we will, you know, that, that this will be done, this will be done, and the various things were done. Otherwise, this would never have gone through. It was not a straightforward, this land is ideal for a development, it was not.
And, and that was the reason for the particular condition that talks about, you know, that's come up here, which isn't in every, every decision, but we, this can come back to us on this.
I'm gonna let Pravu speak, since he hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Justin. So my, my thought is, going back to what Bob was saying, I'm in alignment with the second part, getting the council's opinion, and based on my professional experience, when two qualified lawyers don't come to an agreement, are very firm on their opinions, I don't think we are qualified without getting a council's opinion before we can give anything. And where I'm going with that piece, not in alignment even with approving foundation-only, providing only a foundation-only approval sort of thing, is the, not knowing what are the implications. By doing that, what are the implications? Are we going to get stuck in some kind of proceedings that, that planning board made this decision? So I'm very uncomfortable now. I, I get both the attorneys are very qualified, very experienced, based on their firm arguments, I feel that we need to get town council opinion before we can make a decision. Thanks, Justin.
Just two clarifying points, if I may. One, to Mrs. Hassinger's statement about the trails being important, and that was part of the board's approval, that's one of the items cited in the petition to revoke or modify, is that there was supposed to be compliance with, I think it's condition F-11, which exactly was that, to cooperate to protect the trails. So that's part of the petition to revoke. Two, I think Mr. Hassinger mentioned earlier, I don't know how you can release lots if you have petition to revoke or modify the subdivision approval, so, two. And number three, I would just caution the board with regard to the tripartite agreement. If I am bank counsel and I receive notification that there is in fact a revocation or that there is in fact a revocation or modification petition that has been filed regarding the subdivision, whether or not that bank will continue to lend until that's resolved is a major question. You should make sure you're satisfied.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, I agree with him about checking on that.
So, with regard to this condition, and whether or not it has any life, the decision says that applicant will evaluate improvements, fund cost to design, construction of improvements, with an overall cost not to exceed $13,000. In a memorandum to you after, or at the same time, from the applicant's counsel, Eli Leno of Mayor Antonellis Drakowicz and Horanis, dated December 10th, 2020, which you incorporated into the decision, the statement was made that "A contribution of either site work or money by the applicants to the Grafton Land Trust, in whichever form the land trust and planning board would prefer, will further the publicly beneficial mission of the land trust and warrants the granting of the waiver." That contribution was made in the amount of $13,000. Hence, my client's statement, and he reviewed that, that this was an approved subdivision. Any notion that there's this ongoing obligation to satisfy the land trust's uncertain, you know, concerns about drainage and demands that they be paid tens of thousands of dollars for problems that we didn't create, and extend riprap onto their property, and bargain for an easement, have no basis in the decision. That was complied with, with all due respect. Again, any concerns about the tripartite agreement, that it's belt and suspenders. It's not in lieu of the covenant. The only final point I'll make, and I promise it's final, is that there's a consequence to this. There's a consequence to the board. There's a consequence to the officers and directors of the land trust. And the consequence is that this is causing, and will cause, further delay, will cause real damages, or in lawyer speak, money. So, you know, this notion of an approval by the town and the entering into a covenant and the construction of a project by a developer is in effect a contract between a municipality and a landowner. And there's no question that if there's interference with that contract, and if that interference causes harm or damages, and it's without basis, then there can be liability. And I know it's convenient to speak in terms of the Grafton Land Trust. There is such a thing, but that's not really who's before you. The Grafton Land Trust is a corporation. It's a creature of statute. It's not a natural person. The Grafton Land Trust can't sit in a meeting and, you know, vote to obstruct and delay and ask the board to rescind the subdivision. The Grafton Land Trust, this corporation, can't stand up before you. But the officers and directors of the Grafton Land Trust can. And again, if they interfere with this contract between the municipality and the developer, and if they don't have basis, and if damages occur, like potential purchasers void purchase and sale agreements for failure of the developer to perform, or perhaps the sale price of the properties decreases, that's real damages, and there could be liability for that. So I'd ask the town to think hard about those consequences. There are real consequences. In fact, the developer has been contacted by at least one individual who looks forward to buying a house in this subdivision. He asked to be here this evening. I'm not sure he is. He asked to speak to put some sort of human context to this. It's been going on for three months. So, with all due respect to Mr. Hassinger, when he says, you know, as he said, the engineer said that, he's right. The only engineer that we've heard in, you know, the abstract, is that Norman Hill said this. You haven't heard that from us. You have, you know, Graves Engineering. And he's also right when he says that a court is a place to resolve the question of whether or not an easement is necessary. So, it seems that everything that needs to be resolved in order to release lots has been resolved. There is security that the town has in order to fully and finally resolve any minor issues that are unresolved, such as as-built plans and the like. So, on behalf of the developer, I would renew his request that the board vote to release the four lots requested for building permits, not just foundation permits. Thank you.
You would not be satisfied with the foundation permits? For now, for this week?
I'm being told that we wouldn't.
All right, withdraw that suggestion, then.
From my understanding, can you articulate what is the need that you guys have for the full lot release versus the foundation? You know, what is the difference for you guys on those two choices?
The difference is, we're in December. So we put foundations in. I want to get them weather tight. I want to get them framed, windows and doors on, so we can work inside. So time, I mean, we've had a wonderful fall. But we're just, we're rolling the dice on time. So a foundation permit, it snows. Now the foundations are filled up. I'd like to get decks and be building these houses. So that's why I'd want a full building permit, not just the foundation.
Okay. My, I guess the overall question from me to you, then, is, is it worth nothing, so to speak, on if it's all or nothing, as far as you're concerned? Or if the board does not want to do as a, you know, does not want to do a full lot release? Would the foundations help you further into your desires? Or would you not act on that until you have a full lot release? That's kind of where I'm going with that.
I'm spending more money on site work and foundations, and then have to stop again. All six houses are sold. I have bias. When are we going to be moving in? This has been going on forever. And we're supposed to, well, I won't even get into the how much time was lost. I thought I'd be out of this subdivision last year. Here we are, the end of this year, and I'm still just trying to get lots released. So the thing is, it's timetable. Buyers, anxious buyers that want to get in houses, that I can't give them a closing date, a foundation permit just costs me more money, and then I'm sitting on my hands again. So that would be the reason why.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you for your answer.
It's entirely possible that you can get a foundation permit now, get that done right now, and get releases sometime not very far in the future. Not necessarily, you know, some sort of waiting until spring.
Yeah, I would look to see our end of this light to resolved at our next meeting, two weeks from tonight. I think the only question in my mind is how much weight to give this petition for the 81W action? What legal weight does that carry? I can't answer that. Town Council hopefully could answer that. If hypothetically, if the board were to proceed to release the lots by vote tonight, and then this 81W petition does end up, we do end up acting on it, potentially rescinding the subdivision approval or modifying it, there would be a sense in which the developer is proceeding at their own risk, knowing that the 81W petition has been filed with the board. But as I said, I don't know what legal weight to give that petition and how it should influence our actions. I just don't know that. I would expect to get that at least clarified by the time of the board's next meeting.
Okay. Can I move that we ask for that advice and the advice about the difference of opinion on the draining easement? And continue this until our next meeting?
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. To restate my understanding of the motion, we'll get the, we'll ask council for advice on two separate topics. One, the 81W in particular, and how much weight to give it, roll the board and, you know, and such. And council's opinion on the difference of opinion regarding the easement, and how that relates to the board in particular, and to take no further action regarding the release of lots tonight. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead, Eve.
Sorry. I'm trying to figure out what I'm supposed to ask Town Council to do. So can I, you want advice on whether the 81W petition should impact whether you release lots?
My understanding is...
Whether it should be considered in whether you release the lots?
Yeah, whether the 81W should be considered in, as a whole? If it should be, you know, what is our, you know, we'll need the advice on what the processes, what the board needs to find to invoke a rescinding or, you know, board's direction of a modification of some sort, you know, how that actually works out, and then...
Oh, and if the 81W has any viability, then should we be doing any releasing pending?
Okay. So, with the presence of it having been submitted, what in fact could and should the board potentially do with regard to the release of lots, and how to act on the petition itself? Yes?
That sounds...
Okay. And then the second part is whether an easement is required?
The, yeah.
But in her legal opinion, so we're going to have a third lawyer opining, and so maybe she'll...
Yeah. Basically, her advice to the board regarding their difference of opinion regarding easements. So, the, her opinion on the easement in conjunction with what the board should do or not do with regard to that opinion?
Yeah.
Okay. Would the board could or should or can, or both?
All of the above?
All of the above. Can I move the question?
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Keterman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. We will take this up in two weeks.
Yep, this will be back on the agenda in two weeks, action matter number one.
Before I completely move off the agenda item, it's less, it's less relevant for, you know, there was one commentary that we had, that we briefly touched on a few weeks ago, just to call it up now that I'm remembering it, is the notion that there's rain gardens listed in the approval as a condition for a release of lots.
Yes.
Now, I'll, Eve, do you want to just briefly take the...
Sure. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring the condition, the decision with me. There is a condition under, before any lots are released, that reference a rain garden on the lots. And it's my understanding that there were never supposed to be any rain gardens, and it was something that was probably taken over from a previous decision and put in as a condition, but now it's a condition. So we'd actually like to take that condition out, because it's not relevant to this...
You may not have to. If I may?
Yep.
The condition says, under the section heading, "Conditions to be met prior to release of lots or reduction of surety." I'll paraphrase. Evidence provided indicating compliance with conditions set forth by the Conservation Commission, specifically regarding operation and management of rain gardens to be installed. So as you say, I don't believe that the Conservation Commission did require rain gardens to be installed. So presumably, if the conservation didn't require it in their order of conditions, then your condition becomes sort of annulity, because you can't...
That's fine with me. I just wanted to clean it up for the decision.
I'll double-check the order of conditions, but I believe that's correct.
I do not think that, I did speak to the conservation agent, who told me that there were, as far as she could tell, there were no rain gardens on the plans that were approved by her. I just didn't know how that got in there, and I wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page.
We all know how these come about. It's probably a carryover.
Yeah, right. And we didn't notice it. And so if you don't want it to be taken out, and you feel comfortable, I don't think the board cares, or maybe they do.
I think, looking at my notes from the October 24th discussion where this came up, there were a variety of conditions that we noted that were supposed to be satisfied prior to the release of lots. But in the discussion, my recollection is that some of these conditions were clearly things that would not be expected to be fully completed until all the houses have been built. The rain gardens, I think, was one of the examples where, if there were any, they might have been associated with an individual house. So it would not, it would not make much sense to have the rain garden, if there was one, completed and operational before the house was built, before the lot was even released to build a house on.
Right. And I don't think that there's a requirement for them on any lots per ConCon.
Right. And so the condition may have been intended to say that whatever the Conservation Commission wanted regarding rain gardens, if there were to be any, and throw them around, it was sort of, that was really intended, I think, to defer, to just point out that you've got to meet all the conservation conditions, whatever they are.
Okay. If everyone's comfortable, then that's not a problem.
Right. My note regarding some of that language was sort of, well, you know, there's, maybe we didn't really think this language through in regards to releasing some of the lots before all the lots were done, and, you know, conditions that you wouldn't expect to be done until all the houses have been built. So there was some, the wording of the conditions could have been improved, but I think the sense is, the sense, as I recall from that discussion, the sense of it was reasonably clear.
Yeah. So, yeah, the main reason to bring it up is just to make sure that the board and the applicant and everybody is just moving forward in the way we all expect. And if we needed to modify the decision to clear that up, it probably needed to be a formal hearing just because of the nature of it being a recorded decision. So I wanted just to make sure that was clear. And then the final thing is just procedural. Eve, the paperwork that you have to your right that was handed in person?
Yes.
I would just ask that you have staff make sure it gets emailed out to the rest of the board, because they didn't, the rest of the board did not receive it, as well as Attorney Knappik has not received the letter.
And you're discussing the petition to revoke or modify?
There were two documents, actually, three things submitted to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
A letter from Attorney Sawerta, the petition to revoke, and those documents. Those documents. So those were all submitted to the board at the meeting tonight, so.
And we will make sure that they get emailed to the members who are not here physically, and also put on the website as...
And I believe Attorney Knappik would prefer to have a copy of them as well.
Yeah, please.
Do you want the hard copies, or you want...
You could email it, or the board seemed pretty good about posting things to the website.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll make sure it's on the website, for sure.
Okay.
Yep. Just want to make sure that everything we received tonight is part of the permanent record. Particularly things that we've received tonight that none of us had seen beforehand. So, none of us had a chance to read and evaluate.
And with that, I think we are done with the Willer Road for tonight. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience with all of this.
Now...
It's 7:30.
Yes. It's that and then some.
Can I ask that you bring up the third action item briefly? This is simply, I guess in the past, you've had the town planner sign, be able to decide the decisions. I don't think it's a good idea for me to sign the decisions, since I'm not going to be here for very long. And so I think that the board has to decide who will sign the decisions.
Yeah, we briefly talked about that with regards to the approval not required, that we just had this last meeting. And then, at the brief discussion we had this past meeting about that, it was suggested that when and if we go to approve or deny a decision, we'll make that part of our motion on who would be authorized to sign it. And we would, and I think the board's understanding was we would not formally... And we would, and I think the board's understanding was we would not formally suggest a. Re-signing of the Worcester Registry of Deeds fact sheet until we have the permanent planner.
Perfect, okay.
Alright, so that brings us back to our public hearing for special permit and site plan approval at sixteen Morgan Drive. For Jim Marie Hutton with regards to the keeping of geese. Anybody here regarding that right now? Miss Hutton, we just reopened your public hearing. So we, we just started back up, literally just opened it for the sixteen Morgan Drive for keeping the geese. Last we left us. I believe we had members of the board do a site visit to. Notice the geese, we got some, another letter. Or two, I believe it was, in our correspondence. And we had continued the hearing with the expectation we would be able to. Likely close it tonight and take action on a decision that we do have a draft in our hands. Does any members of the board wanna talk to the site visit? I was not able to make it up for this unfortunately.
Yeah, Bob and I went to the site visit as did today, and um the problem I have is I didn't think they were noisy. I. We, we try very much to make them make a lot of noise. We harassed those poor geese. Uh you know, practically poked at them to try and have them squawk as loudly as they could at us. And I, as someone who has a golden retriever, who has a bark that wakes the dead. I I thought they were pretty quiet, actually. Uh my dogs make much more noise and. So that, that's off the table as far as I'm concerned. It it, we, we really are gonna come down to whether or not. We would find that um it was allowable under our regs. Um I don't think that the noise is something that we should be dealing with. Uh they can deal with that with selectmen because that's really under their purview more than ours. I mean, that's noises. Um something you complain to, to police and stuff like that, not to us. Uh I I don't even wanna go down the increase in wildlife. It, that's been documented in Massachusetts, an immense amount. Um so that's, that's off the table as far as I'm concerned. So what we're really that down to is. What do we find here? Do we find that three geese do not constitute a major. Uh upsetting hazard for an area um that she has provided adequate. Uh or is attempting to uh give a adequate uh screening as far as noise. Um and that she's moved the uh enclosure quite close to her house, actually it's under a window. It, I'm not sure where we go from here. As I say, the noise really isn't an issue as far as I'm concerned, and that's sort of where I stand.
I've got two things and I'm trying to remember what the second one is.
Oh, and 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 I agree with the neighbors, I mean, they little, you live next to her, I don't think you'd hear it much at all. I'm surprised they can hear anything uh where they are because there's a. A building, a um, an enclosure, a pool house or something. That is, among other things, a structure between their house and our house, uh not to mention, it's a little bit of a distance. Uh they're, they're gonna be really sensitive to that because it's a bit of a distance. I don't know, maybe I'm just immune to noises.
Okay. I was there too. I went right over to the geese. Tried to have conversations with them, sort of, and and they, the male. Who was there out in front of his females, defending them from me. Let me know what he thought. But it wasn't any louder than an ordinary dog barking.
Or somebody mowing the lawn or anything.
Yeah, um. I am cautious here, as I've said, that. This case will be cited the next time we try to say no to someone. I'd like the decision to perhaps. Be better, uh somehow better. Isolate this decision from future ones uh that we might come across. This is a particular case and so on. I, it might be possible to consider that this is only in terms of these three geese. We can even get their names if necessary. I think we already have them actually somewhere, um and the and the other thing is the possibility that. Since this is sort of uncharted territory, as I was saying, maybe there should be some sort of a. Come back next, next year. To review the status and the possibility of of needing to. Alter the decision based on experience.
I can't really add anything to what Bob and Linda have already stated as to their observations from the site visit. I will, I was expecting the geese to be noisier than they were and. They were, I guess I was pleasantly surprised at how. Generally quiet they were, we must have been there for half an hour or more. And except for when certain people approached the geese. They were, they were very well behaved, very quiet. I wasn't sure what to expect, but anyway. If I say anything more, it'll be redundant.
Justin, I had a question.
Go ahead, Pablo.
So, i- i- thinking in terms of a decision, can it be binding? Does the planning board's decision be by, can the planning board's decision be binding in terms of number of geese and so on and so forth? I I'm, I I'm borrowing on what Bob led into, right? So if this becomes the precedence, should we also say that? Can we, as part of this decision, which is standalone, also dictate something for the future to say, not more than three geese? Per acre, per two acres, or so on and so forth?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't observe that in the draft decision, which was prepared by Chris before he. Failed out on us. Uh the conditions include condition number one. It specifically authorizes the raising and keeping of three, exactly three geese on less than five acres. Condition two, it only authorizes the applicant to raise and keep geese on the site, cannot be transferred and does not run with the land. So those, those first two conditions go at least part of the way towards what I think Bob was looking for, it was. A decision that is rather specific to this particular situation. The draft decision goes on to uh, you know, to impose various other conditions regarding proper, proper care of animals. Uh condition three was obviously co- copied from a previous decision where we authorized the keeping of horses. In similar cases. Chris, Chris failed to change horses to geese in condition three. Where he did in in some of the additional conditions. There are several conditions regarding, you know, best practices for, you know, caring of geese.
Okay, and i- is there a mitigation, sorry, wait, are you done?
Yeah, that's all I was gonna say at the moment.
Uh so the other thought I had, other question I had was, is there any sort of mitigation for the abutters, right? Uh I I can only imagine if uh the lady mentioned that she went through all, she goes through all this stress hearing the geese make the noise. Taking her word for it, is there at some point of time, maybe when you guys were there for the half an hour, one hour. Speculating, the geese were well behaved. What if at a future point of time, the geese are not well behaved? Is outside of this decision, does the abutter have any other recourse? To uh go ahead and escalate an address or this becomes so binding?
Actually, uh probably. They don't, they would normally not even have come to us. Uh that's an issue that would be taken up, noise, that kinda. Thing would be taken up with the selectmen, not typically through us. The only reason it came through us is because. Of the permitting process, um and otherwise. We wouldn't normally be handling that at all. That's a neighbor neighbor dispute, that's a, something that goes through a different kind of. Viewing than us, um and that's one of the reasons why I really didn't wanna get, go down that road. Because it, I don't wanna include them in any kind of decision that we make because. It isn't the the abutters, because it it's not something that we would normally do. If we have a butters, and we do have a butters that said it's okay with that, that would normally be put in. Um and we'd only go to an objection if it was really a clear one. The other thing is, is that she's made changes, and I think I agree with Bob that maybe what we need to do is to. Give it a period of time and revisit it and see if the changes that she's made. Impact how the neighbors perceive it, although again, you know, I'm not anxious to have them. You know, have that neighbor neighbor tension come to us in from the planning board, but. It's a decision we're gonna have to make, um. But because we've never handled geese before, we know about horses, we know how horses behave because. It's a standard thing, we know about baby goats, pygmy goats, we've seen pygmy goats before, but geese are new to us. Quite frankly, I, nobody's ever come forward with geese before, um and I think that we have no experience. Um at least I don't, well, I do, my grandmother had geese, but they weren't pets. Um they were dinner.
And and pillow feathers.
And pillow feathers, um but. You you know, this is, this is a new area for us, and I I I agree that maybe we need to watch it. For six months or so, which means I would be on the board. But uh you know, that would be, I think that's an approach we ought to take, is give it a time. That we can look and see what happens with this situation a little bit, so giving it a limited approval. This is some sort of a limited, yeah, and now we'll look at it again in six months or so. Plants will start to begin to grow in, although it's, that's take a little longer than that. Um if she's put a screen of plants there, um I don't know, that's. How to accommodate both neighbors, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, well. I'm not sure it's exactly our job to accommodate the specific neighbors. It's, it is our job to make decisions on the one dot five dot five criteria, there's. Ten, twelve of them, um and two of those involve essentially compatibility. Uh and I, how do you make that decision? Based on somebody comes in and complains cuz we had a lot of that in a recent case. Um and that's, you know, that's not determinative. So far, this is very much a open question. We're gonna have to say, yes, it's compatible, and uh there's, there's yes, something noise and whatnot. Um and it's our best judgment at this point. But due to lack of background, um we should. See if uh ma- ma- maybe Eve can suggest uh some, something to put in the decision. To bring it, have an opportunity for a review.
So from, from what I'm hearing right now, it does sound like there is, where the public hearing is still open. We do have the draft decision, it sounds like we're starting to veer toward discussing the nuances of the decision and the board's, you know, direction with that. I'm thinking that unless there is any member of the public who has something to mention that has not been already mentioned in our deliberations. In public hearing on this, we might be better off closing the public hearing at this point. And moving on to either direct it to the decision or moving on to the other public hearing and then coming back to the decision, but go ahead, Bob.
Well, I'll um, I'm not hearing anybody coming forward, so I'll move to close the public hearing. Um and ask the um planner to uh. Work on some refinement of the decision for our next meeting.
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second, the motion is to close the public hearing and direct the planner to. Refine the draft decision in anticipation of us taking action at our next meeting for the decision. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that would, that would likely put the completion of the decision in two weeks from tonight. And we have, as as noted, we have a draft decision already. Which is probably largely satisfactory, so any, any further direction that we can give for. And then, yeah, further for clarifying that decision, and I think we've, we've got, I think, one, one recommendation to. To build in some sort of a.
Right, I, can I ask, can I make two, I guess, a point and a question? So um my first, someone asked if this is gonna set a precedent for the next time. And uh um what I would generally say about special permits is the whole point of the special permit is we're not. It's, it's allowed under certain circumstances and we have to look at the circumstances specifically and allow it, so. If you, if this, if someone else wants to have geese and the circumstances are not similar or there's a reason why. Uh it's not a good location for geese in another location, you're not, you're not, you don't have to. Approve every single one, and the whole point of a special permit is, let's see, let's see if it fits and meets all these criterias, so I wouldn't worry about.
We've had situations come up where past decisions of the board have come up as, okay, well. Why doesn't it fit this? And sometimes litigation is involved. So we are cognizant of precedent setting and making sure that our decisions are drafted for the criteria we're evaluating them at.
Right, and so they have to be very specific.
We're currently. In court, and one of the arguments is you allowed something like this fifteen years ago. When none of these people were on the board and the circumstances were different.
Okay.
And then we've got a judge, and and this has come up numerous times in one way or another, so you know, belt and suspenders.
Okay, I will try to tighten that, and the other question I had is, is, is my understanding, and again, I just got here. That the geese have been on the property for more than just the last, so there's already maybe been a year or. A a number of months where the geese have been on the property, so I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what in fact you want the benchmark to be to bring it back if.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that the geese have been on the property, I believe it is nine, ten months now, maybe, roughly, I'm. Going top of my head here, but that, you know, it is on a record, but that's my kinda back of the head thinking.
Before they've actually gone onto the property so that we could check, they're, they are there now, so.
And but since the start of the public hearing for this, the geese enclosure has been moved from near, from a lot closer to the. Property boundary to under the window on the, on the house on the property, so there has been changes made as, out of the course of this public hearing.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest that. Like if there's any direction that Bob is thinking or. there's any direction that Bob is thinking or, you know, or anyone in particular on how we can, you know, what criteria we're looking for, for timeline, that they basically pass that to you directly? And then we can discuss at our, you know, that, that's my suggestion.
Fair enough. So it's, so there might be, uh, so it's not necessarily reopening it or potentially it just a question of, we'll do a check and at that time we'll just decide.
Yeah, it would, it would be something along the lines of, yeah, one year from the date of the permit issued, there would be a review of some sort.
Okay. Okay, I'll figure it out. And then you guys can decide what you want to do with it when we come back.
Yeah, if you can kind of propose, propose something, then we can, yeah, we, we can wordsmith it.
Perfect.
At the next meeting and then be done with this.
Okay.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkata Trauman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. So this hearing is closed and we'll come back in two weeks with the formal decision and make a determination. Thank you. So our next agenda item is a new public hearing that we did technically open on November fourteenth, and I say technically because we did not have a properly posted meeting that day. So we only opened the meeting to open this public hearing and continue it to today. So we took no other action or no other discussion on that, at that hearing. Do we have any member from the applicant on?
Would, would it be appropriate to read the legal notice?
Oh, yes, it would be appropriate. Thank you, Dave. We did read it two weeks ago, but this is the formal hearing, so yes.
Two weeks ago, all we did was continue the hearing.
Yes.
So pursuant to sections one point five point seven, one point three point three and five point eight of the town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty two, commencing at seven o'clock PM in conference room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, to consider the application for a special permit and site plan review request to construct a wireless communications facility on the property located at fifty eight Palet Street, shown as Grafton Assessor's Map one oh four lot seven. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty, water supply protection overlay zoning district. Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless is the applicant and Sutton LLC is the owner. A copy of the applicant, application slash plan is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the planning department slash development projects webpage.
Alright, and right before we get into it, just one brief commentary that I am aware there is some contention regarding disposition of the land this application is regarding in such that there was a decision related to this parcel land in Sutton that would have conveyed the land in cer- in a certain way that might be under sixty one A or some similar ruling and there is disagreement on where that situation lies, my understanding. That is, that particular issue is largely not the purview of the planning board. So as such, we, we are aware of it. Our responsibility is to rule on the use of the land. So that would this, you know, cell tower be appropriate and appropriate use of the land itself? Assuming that the developer has the full rights to do that on the land. So we may, my, wording that well, Eve?
Yes, and that the, potentially if the board acts on it, um in the decision, there could be a condition that says this is only that, you can only go forward this if in fact the other issue is worked out.
Yes.
But that other issue is not within the purview of the planning board.
I, I am concerned, um, I think.
Either way, that both must work.
The applicant, the application has to be signed by the owner. There's an open question as to whether it is signed by the owner, apparently. Um, so I don't know whether it's properly before us at all. And if it isn't properly before us, we should act accordingly.
I, I believe it was, it is signed by the current owner and the, uh, the disposition of the land does not necess- with the Sutton decision is not necessarily that the owner changes. There could be a conservation restriction or some other uh limitation of the use of the land without changing the ownership, is my understanding.
I don't understand that. If, if it's supposed to be given to the town of Grafton, then it's, it's gra- it should be Grafton's decision what happens.
Right, but I, I think that the Sutton decision doesn't require that it be given to the town of Grafton. It, it needs to be, it, I think it, it indicated that it had needed to be open space or given to a nonprofit or to the town or a conservation restriction on it. It wasn't necessarily that it had to be somewhat, there had to be some other disposition of the land, but it did not, I don't think it required that it be given to the town of um Grafton per se. There is another potential issue as to um whether, it's right now in uh chapter land and uh whether or not, if it gets taken out of chapter land, there's a right of first refusal for the town to get it. But at the moment, it is, the, the owner has signed, the current owner has signed the application. So if in fact the owners change, potentially, but I don't think that to, to, I don't think the owner has to change in order to comply with the Sutton decision. But I, that is not, that is really not uh, uh, under the, under the purview of the planning board is. At the moment, the applicant and the um, the current owner have signed the application. But I, I'm not a lawyer, so if anyone wants to dispute that.
From my understanding and discussion with Eve and looking at the materials, the presumption that the board should be entering today with is that this is a validly submitted application. Now, and the decision that we would ultimately create, whether we deny or approve, would presume that this is a, you know, the current owner, which did sign it, had the right to have this requested of the town, you know, the planning board to make the determination of allowing the cell tower or not. The, I do have the same concerns you have, Bob, with the overall disposition. But I want to make sure that we are acting as we are legally bound to act and that people that would have to act in, in regards to the disposition are working toward doing so, and that's my understanding is going on as well. But I think, I just wanted to frame the discussion on that one point. Because we're not going to be well suited to try to act on that dis- disposition in and of itself as our planning board. But I'll.
You want me to start?
I'll let you present, yes.
You're great, thanks. Uh, Michael Giamo, representing the applicant Selco Partnership, um, doing businesses Verizon Wireless. I'm with the law firm Robinson and Cole. Um, this is a, a proposal, as you mentioned, for a, for a wireless facility within a much larger parcel. Um, the proposal is to construct a driveway up to the area where the, the wireless facility would be located and to construct some stormwater improvements associated with that. Um, to replicate some wetlands, which are being heard by the Conservation Commission on a parallel track. And then to construct the wireless facility to provide the, the service um needed in this part of the, the town and, and the adjacent town. Um, to the extent that um, I'm familiar with the Sutton proceeding, just since the, the people obviously want to talk about it. Um, there was a special permit condition and, and the special permit condition was modified last year to acknowledge, recognize this uh project and the land that's been uh planned for this project, the driveway and the, and the tower footprint. So that part of it is not subject to that condition. Um, and there was also, uh, to my understanding, a notice of withdrawal of that land from sixty one A. And, and again, that's uh something I've seen that's been filed with the town. I understand there's some disputes about it, but I, there's no question, we have a right to be in front of this board and to get a decision based on the evidence of the tower, um, you know, whatever, whatever land issues somebody may have with this. Okay, um, I'm, I'm here with a couple of folks. Um, we have the design engineer here and, and I'd like it if, can you put up some boards, Jesse? That'd be good. And um, I've also got an RF engineer here uh to talk about the coverage needs. Our application has a lot of information in it. Um, I'm anticipating we're gonna be continued, among other reasons, because we need to do a balloon test. Um, I guess I would ask you what would be the most helpful to the board in terms of uh what you want to know about this project at this stage in the proceedings? I can, you know, read my application, but that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Jesse, I'm gonna ask you just because of the nature of the cameras and people on remote, just come right next to me. That'll probably be the best to facilitate people that are at home and.
Yep, no problem. I was trying to figure out the best way to.
You can get through somehow.
Yeah, that's probably, do you think? That one. Yeah, I mean, maybe the one before it kind of gives you the context of where it is on the hill. Um, so, so you can see, it's a little hard to see just in terms of that. Just in terms of the col- the coloring on this, but this is Phulet, Phulet Street going up here. This is the, uh, there, there's two pieces of frontage for this parcel on Phulet Street within the town of Grafton. And the access here would be from the uh more northerly of those. Um, the proposal is to construct a driveway. There's an, an area wetland fill there. It winds up the hill. And uh this is not at the top of the hill, it's on the, on the front side of the hill, but there's a, a tower compound that would be there. It's a fenced area of forty by sixty feet with a monopole inside of it and uh equipment on a, on pads in that monopole. That's the basic uh outline of the project.
Well, would you point the microphone closer to that, towards yourself?
Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and, and, and talk about this. There's, there's two pieces of frontage on Phulet Street, just to give you some orientation. Then the, that's the southern one and the northern one. The axis here is through the, the northern frontage. There's a driveway that winds up the front of the hill to a spot that's partway up the hill where uh the tower compound would be located. It would be a fenced area of about forty by sixty with a monopole inside of that and some equipment on equipment pads. Um, there would be some stormwater improvements associated with the, the driveway as it, as it winds up the hill. Um, the tower height is adequate to allow co-location as your bylaw specifies by other carriers. And I noticed your, your uh public safety people had also made a comment about, about that. So that's, this is, this is a gravel driveway. It's not, it's not a, a hard, hard paved driveway. Um, it's for purposes of access, uh after construction, it would be accessed, you know, once or twice a month for people to calibrate the equipment and, and do routine maintenance of the equipment or, you know, change out parts, things like that. Um, there's no people working at this facility. There's no water, no sewer. There's underground utilities that would run up that, um, that access. Easement, um, there'd be an emergency generator that would run, you know, only as needed and for testing uh purposes once every week or two. And that can be scheduled um at a time of the board's choosing. Um, we, we, we have submitted a balloon study. I know people are gonna be asking questions about visibility and so we would anticipate doing another study and, and noticing it. Um, I understand in your bylaw, there's a seven day requirement, I think Jesse mentioned. Is that right?
Yeah, it wrote something about a pretty long.
So I just, we, we want, we wanted to, one thing we wanted to get out of tonight, if we could, is some understanding of what the balloon test would be. So we can try to come up with a schedule that works for the board and for the people in the town and for the folks who would be doing that. Um, floating that balloon. And I mean, and we, and we can work, work with planning staff on that too, if that's an easier way to do, to go.
Relating to the balloon test.
The, yeah, the, the bylaw says we have to advertise it in the paper.
Right, under- understood, understood. We, we're just, we're asking you, I guess, timing and number of days and so forth, that that would be conducted, you know, hours, et cetera, presumably daylight hours, but.
Getting fewer and fewer in this time of year.
Be interesting to see a balloon test conducted late at night and with a lighted balloon or a non-lighted balloon so everybody can see it, right?
That they can't see it unless it's moon, right? Um, yeah, I mean, this won't be a lighted tower.
No.
Really, that high? I guess it's low.
The marking is for aircraft.
Okay, I, I mean, we, we can, we can, I guess, reach out to the to, to you, Eve or whoever, um, and uh, and try to work out some timing on that if the board doesn't have a strong preference, one way or the other. But I, I would anticipate you'd want to have that done probably before we came back and saw you again, is that right?
The, the overall ideal is that the balloon test is done sooner than later, so the board has that, you know, to discuss, you know, more. You know, within the deadlines we have, as well as added time of day that, you know, time of day and week that the majority of at least the board and members of the public can, you know, be able to view the balloon from whichever angles they wish to view it from, as well as we'll have the photographs on our record and such, but.
Yeah, important to document it with photographs, but yeah, and make it as, as accessible to the public as, as is feasible. I, I'm trying to remember, I don't remember what balloon, what day of the week balloon test has been commonly done at. I think, I think at least in a few cases, I can remember they were done on a weekend.
Yeah, Saturday.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's fine. We can work that out so it gets done on, on Saturday, um, have it up for the daylight hours. Um, we, we would, we, we provided you with a study and we would provide a similar study based on the, the balloon flight. Uh, you know, which would be leaves off at this time of year, so.
Choose, choose a day that's not windy.
Yeah, easier said than done, right. Usually, usually the way this works is there'd be a publication that gives a weather date as well. So that if it's a Saturday, then it's either the next Saturday or the day, the Sunday after the Saturday or something, weather permitting. Um, there's a certain, I don't, I don't know what the wind speed is, but there's a certain rather modest wind speed, after which they're not gonna fly the balloon. Uh, because it's not gonna be.
If you can't count on the balloon being reasonably straight up in the air, then it's kind of useless.
I mean, they can measure the angle and they can adjust the photos, but for anybody who's looking in the public, they're, they're not gonna be able to do that.
Yeah, the pub, the public, you know, the public would like to visualize.
Exactly.
Yeah, be able to, be able to look at the balloon and see that and, and.
I think the balloon needs to be flown at the tower height, regardless of how long the rope on it is.
Right, yeah, right, understood.
I will say, for Eve's knowledge, the last time this board has heard a wireless facility with, and needed a new towers, we did a balloon test, was eighty four Snow Road, and that was back in twenty nineteen, and that is on our record, you know, in the website. I just couldn't, can't find the details on when the balloon test was in a quick skim right now, so.
Okay.
Yeah. How about the one up on Creeper Hill? How about the one up on Creeper Hill Road? Was that before or after that?
I believe it was before this as far as...
Around the same.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that one. It was about 2016, 2017.
Okay.
I'm going to wish one of cows.
Okay. And I know you've had a peer review done or having a peer review done. I see Mr. Maxson on the screen, so I assume he's doing it. We have an RF engineer here who's prepared to talk about the coverage needs for this, if that's something you want to hear tonight as well. You know, at some point we want to get that into the record. It might be helpful for you to understand the, the reason why we're proposing a tower at this height at this location.
Yeah, I believe in the past, Mr. Hassinger, Mr. Robbins can help me remember on this one is that our, we've typically gone through the RF report from you as the applicant alongside having our peer review, you know, from the RF report ready and our peer reviewer able to speak on that as well at the same time.
Okay, and that's not been done yet, is it?
I don't see our peer review on the RF report in my rec, in the record on the site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
David Maxson, can I speak to that?
You may.
Yeah, I was a little bit, little bit behind the eight ball on getting my report out. And then on top of that, it turned out that I didn't have the even numbered pages of the application narrative. And I had written a report to a narrative that was only half as long as it really was. So I did not get a written report to you in time, but I do have some slides that I can present tonight that summarize my conclusions in that report. So if you're interested in hearing more from the applicant and/or hearing my comments on the application, I'd be happy to do that.
This would just be your comments on the odd numbered pages of the application, David?
I did manage, late, late this afternoon, I did manage to get the even numbered pages as well. So my comments would be on the, on the entirety of the narrative.
Have the even numbered pages been posted to the website?
I believe that they have.
Because when I, when I read it, I saw the same thing.
I believe that when we realized that there was an issue, Natalia scanned them all and put them back up. I think it was a problem with the scan that we, I don't know. But yes, I think the answer is if you look now, all of the pages would be on there.
That looks accurate. I think how I would perceive that is where our peer reviewer is ready to talk to and present on the report, even though we don't have the report in our writing yet. I think it does make sense to let you go over the RF report and then have a peer reviewer talk to his side of that.
So he is here from C Squared and he prepared the report that's in the application and he can talk to the need. Do you have a way, oh, you've got the, the boards, very good. So you could go up and...
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the Board. So Hail Usmani for the record. I'm an RF engineer working for C Squared Systems. I'm representing Verizon for their RF design. So I'll go over the, the coverage plots that have been, that are part of the RF report submitted with the application. This is the first attachment of the coverage plots that you see. The little shapes are the site locations. This, where Mike's pointing, that's colored dark blue, is the proposed location, which is called Grafton III in Grafton. And the other similar shapes around that in various towns are in black and those are existing locations. The green color on the map shows the existing coverage in the threshold of minus 95 dBm, which is sufficient for some in-building coverage as well as outdoor, in-vehicle coverage for Verizon Network. Flip over to the next page, please. This map includes the proposed site, which is in the center of the map, the dark blue. And it is showing how well it covers some of the white areas that were in the previous slide in the same threshold of minus 95 dBm. These coverage plots are for the 700 megahertz frequency spectrum for Verizon. If, if I was to present a mid-band in the 1900 or 2100, the space, the green coverage, or if I used another color to represent the coverage, would be a lot smaller. The higher the frequency, the less colors you would see fill the gaps. Next map, please. This is, this map, actually you missed one.
Did I skip one?
Yes. Oh, maybe it's in the wrong order. Yeah, it's that one. So this map, again, the, the site locations are the same. What this map in various colors shows is the existing coverage around the proposed site, which are, which is coming from various, you know, surrounding sites. And, you know, people may argue, hey, I, I have coverage in the areas that you're saying that you don't have coverage current, coverage currently. But as the number of users increase, as the demand for data increases, so does, so the carriers have to add on sites in order to cater for the additional demand, which is also called coverage demand. So if you go back to the previous plot, please. The green is where, again, the proposed site fills in and it, these are called offload sector maps where the proposed site is offloading the surrounding sites where the coverage is coming from far-off distances. If you look at the scale bar, you know, some of the sites are around two miles away or, or more. And, you know, just around the proposed site location of Grafton V, people may be getting coverage, but it is far away and, and, you know, they may, subscribers closer to the site, to the, the actual site may have a higher priority just because they have better coverage. So with the introduction of the proposed location, you're getting a nice fill-in and offloading the surrounding sectors.
Do you want to explain it, like pick a, pick a color maybe?
Color, yes, of course. So I will take the example of Sutton, Sutton Alpha, which is represented by yellow. And the orange one is North Bridge Gamma, which is to the east. So let's take the example of those two sites. So that's probably about more than three miles away, the, the one to the east, North Bridge Gamma. And the Sutton, Sutton Alpha is around two miles to southwest. And if you just, if you just keep those colors in mind and when, you know, Mike, if you flip back to the, to that. Yes, those, those yellow and, and orange are, are now taken over by the green where the coverage should be. And the last one is the, the last slide is, the map is the, the terrain map.
Yep.
We included that to give an idea of how the site sits with respect to the surrounding sites and its terrain elevation. It does sit quite high up, but it, it, a little to the north, the ridge, there is a ridge that rises. And, you know, we have to be at a certain height, you know, in order to overcome that so that, that, you know, we could provide coverage to the north and, and northeast. Any questions I'll be able to answer?
Any questions for their RF engineer before we have the peer reviewer speak?
Are we going to hear from David?
David whom?
David Maxson.
Maxson, yes, sorry.
Yes, he's, he said he was prepared to talk to us.
Yep.
How quickly they forget.
I thought you meant David Johnson for a second. I got myself confused. I'm happy to hear from Mr. Maxson before we go with any questions then. No problem. Mr. Maxson, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Can I share my screen? Let me just give it a shot here.
Can I allow you to share your screen? There we go.
Switch on, beginning, share screen, screen one. Share. Okay, David Maxson with Isotrop, working for the board on this application. So in my written report, what I try to focus on are the things that raise questions, things that, that I generally agree with or don't have any issue with, with what the applicant said. I just don't, don't bother touching on. So what I'll try to do here is go over the highlights of some of my observations on the application. The first one is, in almost no particular order, the bylaw looks for evidence of a lack of alternatives and it's part of the process in your review that you have to be looking at that and making determinations. And so the applicant has, I think, stated in a general way, but has not really provided any specific material that shows whether or not there are any of the preferred zoning districts within a reasonable distance of the proposed site and the proposed target coverage area. And those preferred districts in the bylaw are the CB, OLI and I zones. And it's my impression that there are none anywhere near the proposed location, which is, if my cursor is visible, here's Fallett Street here. And the parcel is off to the left here. So I, if the board is, would like to have more documentation of that, you certainly ask the applicant to be more specific about it rather than just rendering a, a general statement that Verizon always looks for sites in the right districts and sites on existing structures. And so that same issue comes up with the existing structure question. I, you know, I'm not familiar with the area much. I did notice that there are some transmission lines. They're on wooden utility poles that are not particularly tall. But those transmission line poles are existing structures and the bylaw does call for a demonstration of what existing structures exists and an explanation as to why they are not viable, either from a coverage standpoint or accessibility or anything else. So again, if that's something that the board would be looking for some additional details on for the record from the applicant, certainly something you can ask for. On the other hand, boards are fonts of local knowledge. So there may be things here that you collectively understand and don't require additional evidence for. So I leave that to you all to decide. Now, there in the conditions for granting a permit, one of those conditions is relating to the sufficiency of the screening of the facility from view. And, and it's specifically within a quarter mile radius, a 1320 foot radius. And the applicant's photo simulations, which is the map from which I took a screenshot of and put on this slide, has that 1320 foot radius. And you can see that in terms of the locations where they identified points of visibility, apparently they could not really find anything along Fallett Street, especially in the 1320 foot radius where you could actually see the tower. And then over on the Sutton side of things, there are points A, B, C and D that are within the 1300 foot radius. And obviously A is closer to the tree line, so much less of the tower is visible from point A if you go look at the photo simulations. So there is the question here is, is what is shown as being visible at locations B, C and D, sufficient cause to say that this proposal needs, needs mitigation, needs to be improved or not? Again, I'll leave that to the photo simulations and to the subsequent balloon tests that the applicant is going to do under, you know, public notice. And just a couple of options that can come up if, if there's an issue is, well, what about a lesser height? And Mr. Usmani explains that the location is on high ground, but it's not on the top of the hill. So in order to get coverage to the north, that tower has to be pretty tall to get a good view over the hill. And that could be one of the issues. Why not move the tower to the north? Another, I don't know, whatever it is, 40 to 60 feet higher in elevation. So the tower itself does not need to be as tall and would be closer to the tree line from the view of a skyline view, if there are skyline views of it. And that would also be farther away from these residences on the lower left. I'm sure applicant can explain how difficult they may find it to be to access other points on this property and that perhaps they've identified the, the location that they feel is their best trade-off. But that's something we certainly asked them for more information on. So the question of less height at the current location would be, well, how much less height would be acceptable in terms of the visual impact analysis that you've seen from the photo simulations and the people who witnessed when they witnessed a balloon test? Is, is there any benefit in reducing the tower by 20, 30, 40 feet in height? And what is the penalty for doing that? In addition to potentially affecting Verizon's coverage, the other potential penalty is reducing the usefulness of a tower to other carriers who will co-locate on it. So it's, it's always a careful balancing act to balance any proposed height reductions against the penalties in coverage and the penalties in potential co-location that doing that would accomplish. And my general recommendation is that if there is no material benefit to reducing the height of the tower, to not reduce the height of the tower simply because you can, but rather to only consider reducing height of the tower if it makes a material difference in the overall visual impact on the community. And then here is one of the views, view B from the, within that 1320 foot radius circle. And you can see a substantial amount of the tower is visible above the tree line from this direction. And the other photographs that are taken in this area, inside and outside that quarter mile radius, are, are similar in appearance. There's another thing where the, the bylaw has a, a, a height for panel antennas of five feet. This is a, a, a very old regulation based on what panel antenna heights were perhaps 20 years ago. Today, the, these panel antennas are not just a single band antenna. They are packed with capability. They have multiple frequency bands that they tend to make available in a single package. And they can be six to eight feet tall. The applicant's is six feet tall. So they're asking for a waiver of that design criterion to limit the height of the panel antennas. And if you look at the, the drawings, not all of the panel antennas are, actually you can see it here in the, the detail that I, I pulled from the drawings, that there are six panel antennas that would be six feet tall. And then there are three each at lesser heights. They're much shorter. So I would suggest that that's something that's worth a waiver because this is very commonly the kind of equipment that is put on cell towers today. And then just to kind of go over the, the positives of this, rarely do I see an application in a town that has large setbacks where the applicant has found a property where it can satisfy the setbacks without asking for variance. This speaks strongly in favor of this parcel. As they've noted, their nearest residence is more than 750 feet away. Um, the tower is not at the summit, as I noted, um, and, um, but it is on ground that, as you can see, is, is higher than most of the surroundings, which is what gives it such a good coverage footprint. Um, and as the applicant showed in there, uh, pointing out the existing cell sites around the perimeter of this locus, uh, they're at quite a distance, and, uh, uh, this is relatively central to that. So, it's, it's at a good location for, um, uh, improving service in this area. I don't have any issues with the coverage analysis that Mr. Usmani provided. Um, it's pretty straightforward, just simply look at the, at the coverage that's available from the, uh, lowest frequencies which penetrate the foliage and the terrain best, and even looking at, at that coverage, um, there is clearly, uh, gaps in service in this area of Grafton, and this facility is centrally located to, to address that. Um, and then also the, uh, uh, communications from the police and fire department, that, uh, uh, they would like to have a condition that, uh, the tower be made available to public safety antennas. That's a very common thing to put as a condition, uh, you know, with the understanding, of course, that it's the, uh, the, the town's cost to, uh, supply the equipment and, uh, install it and maintain it. Um, and that, uh, the equipment should not be preventing a wireless carrier from using the tower. So, if we have something that's a hundred seventy feet tall, one seventy, one sixty, one fifty, one forty, that would be the window for four wireless carriers, then below one forty, you could put public safety antennas. And potentially, if it's planned ahead of time, the top of the tower above the cellular antennas, you could plan to put, uh, those whip, uh, public safety antennas, which are not anywhere near as massive as the panel antennas that the cell sites use, so they don't necessarily present, uh, uh, an objectionable appearance, even though they're above the height of the tower. Um, so that's a, that's a pretty common, uh, approach. Now, one thing I just did want to do, if I can slide this in, and I hope I'm viewing the screen and not the window, did, are you seeing their coverage map now?
Yes.
No.
Now we are.
Yep.
Okay, I have to wait for it to populate everybody's screens. Um, so, one thing that I find, uh, a little telling, and Mr. Usmani may be able to help clarify this, is, um, is these, um, sector footprint maps are actually very helpful in this day and age, where it's not just coverage, it's, it's how much, how many people a particular sector is trying to serve at the same time. And you can generally equate surface area with quantity of people, um, to some extent, if you know what the, the density of the activity and the use of the streets is. Um, so with this existing, uh, map, uh, we're seeing what Mr. Usmani was showing, and, um, you know, coming out from the Sutton facility in the lower left, it's projecting pretty far, uh, into, uh, uh, Grafton, uh, but, as Mr. Usmani pointed out, with very low signal strength. So, it's, it's putting a real, uh, demand on the Sutton cell site. Um, uh, not just because of the amount of area it covers, but because, uh, we, we saw with the coverage maps that out at a distance here, the signal strength is, from Sutton, is not very good. Um, so, th- the solution seems to be huge. Um, with that one hundred seventy foot height on the, uh, elevation on the hill that it is, uh, it's throwing, uh, a pretty strong amount of coverage to the northeast and covering quite, uh, amount of area. Um, and, uh, I was just curious about the, the, what the effect on coverage from Grafton Four and Grafton Two is, I didn't really notice any colors for those. Um, uh, so, it, that speaks to the idea that, at least in that direction, a hundred seventy feet may not be necessary. Um, or as they say, one hundred sixty-five feet, which is the center of the aperture between one sixty and one seventy. But, so, we might refer to it as one sixty-five or one seventy, we, we mean the same thing. Um, and to the north, uh, west, uh, there's coverage doing pretty well in that direction from this facility as well. It's quite a large footprint, um, largely, I think, because of the tower height and the ground elevation. And the only weakness, I think, is that because you're shooting over the hill, um, you have to be high enough to shoot over the hill in order to get this coverage to the north here, again, as I think Mr. Usmani was explaining. So, uh, if there is a concern about the tower height, if you think that a, uh, uh, a substantial decrease in height would convert this proposal from something that's a non-starter to something that is tolerable, uh, then you might ask the applicant more questions about alternative heights and what the impacts are, so she can have that in the record. On the other hand, if you feel that because this property is already carefully chosen to satisfy the town's large setbacks by a healthy margin, uh, and that it's nestled in the woods, uh, in that respect, uh, and that you can tolerate what visibility there is at the height that's proposed, then there's no need to go down the road of, of, uh, negotiating a lesser height. Uh, but that's really something that's up to, you know, up to the board and up to the comments from the residents to get a feel for, for what the, uh, visual impact is. Um, and with that, I'll stop sharing, I'll be happy to answer questions and, um, uh, take more input from the applicant, if the board is looking for it.
Can we? Can we ask, uh, Mr. Usmani to respond to that question about the two sites in the corner there, four and two?
I was wondering that as well, so go ahead.
Um, good observation, and, uh, coming from, from an RF engineer as well. Um, as you, as you see, um, all the sites in the, in the coverage maps, um, that have been presented, we, we do run stats for all the sites, and just pick the, the topmost, top five, six, or seven, as, as many as I can easily fit, and not make it too cluttered and help understand. Otherwise, the sites that Mr. Maxon pointed out to the northeast and, and more towards east Grafton, um, two, I believe, uh, those are also being offloaded, but they didn't fall into the category of a higher percentage or, or, or a larger number. So, they didn't make it in the list.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the board before I open it to the public? Seeing none.
Well, um, at, at some point, I know that there are people concerned with this particular location, and it's, uh, apparently sensitive. We have comments on the record about it, and it's a much taller tower than any that we've ever permitted. Um, and I'm, you know, I've been on the permitting of every tower in town, including the writing of that bylaw, um, back twenty or thirty years ago. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm not at all, um, comfortable with the kind of heights we're talking about. Go ahead.
You can come on up, just.
Uh, no.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Adam Ray, forty-two Fallett Street. Uh, it's lots to unpack here, it's been going on for a while. Um, so anyways, I started going around and looked at all the towers on their maps, and, uh, then I took pictures of them, I've got pictures for everybody. And I cannot, you know, I started going at the Home Depots and every other commercial location, and I tried to find towers that matched their towers, like this one, at, uh, two ninety and one ninety, the Amazon facility. It's about the closest one I could find. Um, I saw some other similar ones, all in commercial space, and I believe, uh, the ones on their map, I visited them all. Uh, ones at Tony's Pizza, ones at, you know, you know where they are. And, and the one on Creeper Hill that you guys approved, this is also industrial area, and it's a big tower, it's a one seventy tower. Now, that being said, you know, I'm sure Verizon, uh, would like to have towers on every hill. I mean, wouldn't that just make sense to have them all on the tallest towers on the tallest hills? But they don't, because there's a reason for that. And the reasons in the bylaws, and one of the bylaws states that you're supposed to protect scenic areas, scenic landscapes, uh, to protect the scenic and recreational values of the town, um, the visual effects, um, no impacts, site faci- site facilities below visually prominent ridge lines. Lazy Hill is the most prominent ridge line in the town of Grafton, I think. I could be wrong, but I think it is the most, that hill basically is straight up on all sides. I've visited their site, I've been to their site. Um, it is not a secluded area, as the gentleman before me stated. Um, it will be visible to all, and it's not a low density, you've got Fallett Street, you've got other areas. You've got a high density in Sutton and, you know, Forest Edge, that will be right behind them. Um, I kind of object to the, the planning board even hearing this, but I know you've gone ahead with that, because there is a lot of, I think, questionable legal questions here before it even comes before this board, I know you've continued on with that, but, um, I think there's definitely going to be some problems with that. Um, I just don't think you could find a more inappropriate location as far as the scenic value of our town. Um, and, obviously, one of the rules from the FCC is, they can change this tower too, and add things and do whatever they want after the fact. That is their, their right to do. I also think, uh, calling it low-density neighborhood is a little misleading also. I don't think it's a low-density neighborhood at all. Um, and I just think because of the ridge line, and, um, I really think because of the questionable, uh, nature of this proposal, I think the board should, uh, one, not even hear it, or seriously, uh, look into whether this is an appropriate spot, and why is this not an unprecedented location? When I can't find a site with such a tower and such a massive construction project of this scale anywhere that would match this location? They're all in commercial, industrial locations, and I just can't find one. Um, I went up there, I, I have some old pictures of the ridge line, I know you guys know where it's at, um, this and that, but I'd like to, uh, give them to the board too, if you take them and any kind of, uh, other information I have.
That, that is, I can hand it over to Ms. Tapper here, and we'll get them uploaded to the record.
And that shows the ridge line prominently displayed, and, uh, just the size of this project, I mean, they're saying, oh, it's a little dirt road up there. It's not a little dirt road up there, it's going to be a big dirt road up there, there's propane tanks up there, there's generators up there, there's hills that are going to be cut and have to be banked. We're talking about a hill that goes straight up. This is the definition of a ridge line, a prominent ridge line in a scenic neighborhood, and it will definitely cause blight. So, I'm sure we're going to have a chance to talk more about this, I hope, in the future, and be able to get together and, and, uh, get more information to you, and have another chance to, uh, bring our concerns and before you.
Yeah, at, at the very least, because of the balloon test, we will definitely be having an additional date for the, for.
It, it was brought to my attention, I don't know if it's true, that you can actually request a crane to be up there, because of the way the nature of the balloons blow around, and it's not an accurate, inadequate, and I don't know if we have that ability to ask for that, if that's something that isn't our legal purview.
I, I'll say, I've seen balloon tests performed by crane, I've seen them not, the last one that I was on the board for was done by a crane, we did not explicitly request it. The intent of the balloon test is that the balloon is at handwavy, the location the tower would be at, and at the height the tower is at. So, the, if the wind blows it off course by, you know, I don't know, five hundred feet, just throw numbers around, that'd be kind of off the point of where it is, and if it's not the right height, that's, you know, that would be an issue that we would then want to make sure we address.
Uh, there was one more thing too, it seems like, uh, a lot of the conversation on, uh, the coverage of this tower would benefit other towns. It seems like the coverage would be a little bit better in other towns, and I have a little bit of a problem, well, because I've only have, obviously, one service, and I drive around these areas, and I drive around, because I've been, this is what I've been doing, I've been driving around cell tower areas, uh, for, for weeks and months now, and looking at cell towers and seeing how services and stuff, and it's, it's, it, it's, uh, unusual where, like, the gentleman said, you have service and, and then, you know, right next to a tower, you don't have service, you know, the tower will be on Fallett Street, and they say there's no service on Fallett Street, but there is, and then, it just, just seems a little screwy as far as how it all, you know, how that works. But I just think, in closing, that this is probably the most inappropriate place to put a commercial, industrial project of this size in this type of a scenic area. And I'd just like to, uh, continue on with that thought in, in the future.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Teresa Rae, oh, go ahead.
I think Linda may need to make a motion.
Yes, uh, given the hour, we need to vote to, uh, take the meeting beyond ten o'clock. So, I approve that we extend the meeting beyond ten o'clock.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to have the meeting go past ten o'clock. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkateshraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, because the motion carried unanimously, we will continue past ten o'clock. Go ahead now, I apologize.
Teresa Rae, forty-two Fallett Street. I just want to, I want to get something clarified, I, do we have, I don't think the balloon test is going to be adequate. Is it yes or no, do we, I understand we have the right to have a crane, and I think that would be much more beneficial. So, my question to you is, can we have a crane? I'm not, if that's our right, then we want that.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have the right to directly require it to be a crane.
I, I think that's something that you need to look into.
We, we can certainly look into that, I think the end result as far as I'm concerned is if the balloon is at the right location, at the right height, that should be satisfactory. I think if the, if the crane.
I think the weather conditions are not going to, you, you can't, in this time of year, have a, an adequate view of the balloon.
I live on a, I live on a hill in this town as well, not the same hill, but I live on a hill in this town, so I know how even on days that the wind seems extremely calm in the rest of the town, it can be very windy where I live. So, I do recognize the, you know, concern about that.
Yeah.
And I, without knowing the tree cover on that parcel very well, I can't say how easy it is to get a crane in there, you know, either, so that's, that's the.
Okay.
You know, that's a concern, I, the intent that we want is that the balloon is at the right height, at the right location. And I think if there's the ability of the crane in there, that, you know, that may be the best solution to achieve that, it may not be, but the, my intent, at least as, as a chair, is that we do get that balloon at the right location, at the right height.
All right, well, I just want to reiterate then, I, um, just to get my point in here. I don't believe this is low-density, sure, it's in a wooded hill, but it's surrounded by neighborhoods, high-density, a high-density, um, complex, forest edge. It's surrounded by neighborhoods, um, Southfield, Fitzpatrick, Fallett. I mean, you're in the middle of a ne- you're in the middle of a residential area, this is crazy, and it's, to me, I don't even know why we're here, because it's clear as day, it's against the bylaws, five point eight. It clearly states, don't put it in, don't put a cell tower, especially of this size, the tallest one I've ever, I, I don't even know there is one taller than that, um, on a ridge line in a residential neighborhood. So, I just want to go on record saying, it seems ludicrous, thank you.
Thank you for comments. I will just say that my understanding of both state and, to an extent, federal law regarding this is that even if we believe this is not a, you know, like, going into. even if we believe this is not a, you know, like going into it at the very outset before the hearing comes to pass, that we believe it's not the right location, we believe it's, you know, just completely inappropriate. It could be literally next to someone's house and we think it's inappropriate. We still have to give the, have a hearing, have to give the applicant opportunity to present their, their reasoning. And make a decision based on the facts of, you know, the hearing and our decision could be denial. It could be approval, but the, we have to have that, you know, this process. Is there any further comments from the public?
Michael Palermo, 45, Fallett Street. I appreciate my neighbor's comments, so I'm not going to elaborate on those. I think they went into it and talked about the scenic aspect, um, very well. I do have a couple of points of clarification. I know that you commented on the, at the beginning about the things relating to Sutton. I think that's a very important component of this. And I think that has to really be looked at on how that it was taken out of and put into, um, out of farmland and taken out of that particular parcel and, um, extracted from the 61A component. In our town, not in Sutton. Okay, that's the important component. They did refer to the, um, coverage and they didn't really, it was a very well done, uh, presentation about the coverage. He mentioned Grafton once. And that, once. And lastly, um, I appreciate Mr. Maxson's, um, report. Um, my only question to him is, did he actually go to the street and look up at the hill? And actually check out the scenery because that's part of looking at and visualizing where this would go. Um, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for comments.
Question for him. Question for him. Uh, maybe someone could write down or send around maybe an address that's the best view of, uh, what you're talking about.
I would go to.
Lot of trees.
Yep, you go to a lot of different locations. Just go, you can go stand. It's at 58 Fallett Street is where the, uh, opening is. You can go to either 42 Fallett Street and look up on the ridge line. Please pull in the driveway and you can do that. You can go, go across the street to 45. You can go to Southfield and look up. And Southfield is the area that, um, all of you should be familiar with because right over near there are, are all the, um, uh, panels, the solar panels were, were put in over there in the Dauphine Park over there. Then you would should, should go over to Sutton to Forest Edge and look at that. And then go on the other side on 122A and to the storage location and look up from that side. And take, or then go on to, the last thing I would do is go on to Fitzpatrick and take a look from that side. From, um, the Leclerc where, um, the Leclerc, I don't know them. The Leclerc property. I don't know that the particular address. 75 Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, I'd, I'd really like us to have a note that runs those things down.
I think that's most important, sir. I think that's.
I tried to drive up Fallett Street looking, but as I was driving, I didn't, I couldn't get a really good look.
Just stop in and you can pull in my driveway.
May I finish?
Yep, sorry.
I please finish.
Sorry.
Um, what I saw for the most part seemed to be fairly tall trees close to the road. So I couldn't really see up towards the hill too much. So I must not have been in good places and, and I'm not going to remember from what you said tonight, believe me. Especially at 10 o'clock. So if, if you could give us a note, uh, with, with the locations you recommend booking, it would help me. Thank you.
Excellent. We will do that.
Mr. Chairman David Maxson, can I speak to the balloon testing just briefly here?
You may.
Thank you. Um, yes, first of all, uh, just to make it clear, um, uh, my role is to help the board establish a record with substantial evidence that it can rely on. It, my aesthetic opinion has nothing to do with the board's decision making. I might think this tower is gorgeous, or I might think this tower is a stupid idea, but that doesn't matter. What matters is that the board is going to collect substantial evidence. What it has right now is a photo simulations based on a balloon test that was conducted by a company that does balloon tests. And does it using appropriate protocols. Uh, and those photo simulations are based on photographs that a photographer was charged to look for locations where they could find places to take pictures of the balloon to do the photo simulations. Since there will be another balloon test, and this is very important for the members of the public. Members of the public aren't confined to the public ways, the way the photo simulation guy was. So if there's a view out your bedroom window or from your back porch or up the far side of your driveway or at some treasured location that you walk the dog. By all means, take photographs of the balloon test from those locations. Use a standard camera lens. Don't cheat and use a zoom lens. Use something that's a normal equivalent to a 55 millimeter, 35 millimeter camera lens. Uh, and mark the location, perhaps on a map or at least with a description on the back of the photograph. Or put a minute of document that describes where it was taken from. And, uh, use that to provide evidence to the board about concerns that you may have about visual impacts in places that the standard photo simulation, uh, effort might have missed. And that's, that's an important part of this whole process, public process of doing a balloon test that everyone is aware of. As far as a crane is concerned, if the site is reasonably accessible by a crane that can get to that height or at least close to that height with a tether with a balloon floating off the top of it, say it's a hundred and fifty foot crane and you need another 20 feet, put a tether and a balloon on it. That is definitely the most stable platform for doing this. Um, and, uh, I have seen boards, uh, ask applicants to do that when it's physically possible to, to run a crane. And I expect that the applicant, if a crane can be got, gotten up that hill, um, uh, they would consider that. And then the folks who do conduct the balloon tests, um, with a tether, uh, tend to use laser range finders and other methods to make sure the balloon in a steady breeze, the balloon is at the right height. If it's gusty, you just have to wait till the balloon has paused momentarily at, at its maximum height, uh, before you take your photograph. Um, so those are just some, some things on the, the whole balloon test process and, uh, it, I think it'll be very useful for the board, uh, to get input from the public, uh, uh, in terms of, of photographs and documentary evidence to, uh, sup- supplant the record.
Thank you, Mr. Maxson.
Justin, can I ask a question?
Good, probably, yes.
Uh, this is for Mr. Maxson. So when, just for a general awareness, when you say 55 millimeter, uh, camera lens, would that work with a, a phone? Is that equivalent to a phone, iPhone?
That's a great question. I'll, I'll try to do the short version of the tutorial. First of all, the, the 35 millimeter film camera of a generation ago is the reference. That, that size image takes, uh, as a normal lens is a 50 to 55 millimeter focal length lens. If you have a camera with a really small sensor, the focal length of your lens will be different to get that same standard, normal field of view. What most camera lenses, camera pictures that I, I've looked at, for instance, from my iPhone, is that it'll provide you with the equivalent focal length. So that i- if, if it says it was a 50 millimeter, uh, lens, uh, you can check the instructions or go online. That would indicate that it's a, it's equivalent to a standard film camera's 50 millimeter lens. Normally, uh, when you're at the normal position on your, your handheld, your cell phone, um, it's a very wide angle. It's more like a 35 to a 30 millimeter, uh, frame. Uh, which is, which makes the subject smaller. So you want to zoom it in a little bit from on your cell phone. And if you can look up the, the data, the metadata on your pictures, uh, they will report what your, your lens focal length is.
Okay. Thank you.
Now come on.
You know, in my travels to the cell towers, I was amazed at how many there are. If you go down 146th, almost every exit has a cell tower right up along the, the road. A lot of the Home Depots, just, there are a lot of cell towers out there. Some are 50 footers, some are 175 footers. So to say you do not have an alternate, you know, uh, alternative, uh, placement for a cell tower other than in a scenic residential neighborhood. I, I just find it hard to believe that you can't find another commercial spot to put a cell tower and it has to go here. Uh, with that, I just want to, uh, just reiterate, um, uh, a welcome to come, uh, to my property at 42 Fallett Street. And, uh, just pull in the driveway. I don't have to be there. You can stop by anytime and take a look up at the hill. It's right in front of you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any further comments from the public or members of the board or?
We, we'd like to continue to a date and time certain, um, after the likely balloon test. So I'm guessing that's either late December or early January by the time we can get that squared away and noticed.
Let's see.
I think the, the board is generally willing to give you as much time as you think is needed. You know, we don't want to rush things through. We like, and we don't want to kind of spin our wheels having a hearing and then really having nothing to talk about and continue it anyway. So yeah, you know, you pick, pick a, pick a date that seems to work. I know we have, uh, you know, we are expecting a written report from Mr. Maxson. We, I believe are expecting a review also from Graves. I mean, we haven't talked about the, the drainage at all. No need to do that really until we, you know, I mean, yeah, I know conservation is also going to be looking at that from a stormwater perspective. You know, that's something, that's something that we take an interest in as well. And so we'll be, you know, presumably Graves is on the, on the job here and that, you know, we are expecting a, a report from him at some point.
Yes, and conservation, uh, the hearing was opened and continued, correct?
That's right.
So our, our next and only meeting in December of this year is the 12th, which is two weeks from tonight. That's probably too soon, especially for the balloon test and everything else. Following that, we have our 2023 schedule, which is now published. The next hearing date in 2023 is January 9th. Following that, January 23rd and then February 13th, whichever.
Can we, uh, assume the January 9th, continue it to that date and time? And if there's an issue between now and then, we can ask for another continuance.
You can.
Without coming in or whatever.
Yeah, you should be able to, you should be able to ask for another continuance through staff. They can take the, take, take the formal request, you know, for both tonight and for, if you need another one at, after tonight's date. Yeah. Yep, and I will.
I think the, the board has to, does the board not have to vote to continue it to a certain date?
Yes, we, we.
Getting ready to make a motion.
Yep, we'll continue, we'll take the motion and, and vote to continue for tonight's hearing until January 9th. And then if they have a need to continue it past that, they would contact staff, get a form to staff. And then that night presumably without the meeting, we could take it up and make that vote.
Okay.
I, I, I move to grant the applicant's written request to continue the hearing until January 9th at 7:30.
I have a motion to continue this hearing until January 9th at 7:30 PM. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. This hearing will be brought back up with us on January 9th at 7:30 PM. Any, between now and then, any members of the public, anybody have anything to add to the record? You can contact through staff and it can get uploaded and we'll have that available. It doesn't have to wait until that very day.
Yeah, I think people want to understand getting information on the record is very important. We've, we've been here before.
Yep, and you, just, just to add on to that, you can submit information through the planning board's website for this project.
Yeah, that, that's a convenient way to get written, although you can send a letter, you know, do whatever, uh, makes sense.
One way or another.
We'll get those addresses sent in.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Maxson, it's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you again. I wonder how many times this is for us.
Uh, too long, too long.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'll just give.
Give them a moment to clear out.
That's fine.
And give you a welcome to sit if you want. Those microphones also work.
Okay, I, I want to be able to see the TV if I have my presentation. Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, that is one downside of sitting at the table there is you can't see it. Put a screen up there for you to see.
Sometimes I wish there was one right here.
Yeah.
Quickly, they might even.
Not notice.
Yeah, Linda's taking a, a three minute break.
Okay.
Justin, uh, I need a two minute break. I'll be back.
Okay.
What, what, everyone else is.
Um, do you know if there's anyone else from the public online? Just for, just so I know how to, if I'm just talking to the board or to anyone in the.
Yeah, there are.
As of the moment, there are three or four.
Okay.
I think it says four, but I only see three names, so.
Okay, no, no, no problem. Just so I know, I have to explain the, the whole situation.
We've, we have talked about the MBTA zoning a few times at our past meetings.
Okay, yeah, I assumed.
It's not completely new.
To reiterate a little.
Yep.
Oh, we're taking a little break.
Yes.
Do you guys, um, replace the placards or is this, are these permanent planning board placards? Do you take them with you? Okay.
I think I do.
Nice. Nice. And it's just paper? The insert.
Our other placards.
Oh, okay. Just curious. I'm impressed, I'm impressed you got Eve's placard printed so quickly.
Freakly, I was surprised to see her placard printed as well.
I guess I was wishful thinking to think that you wouldn't have to extend it past ten.
I was.
What is that for? Is that like the the?
It passed practice before it, nothing that is technically required. It's just, it was a, years ago, there was a chair that started to get frustrated that the meeting is going very long. So they made it a vote to actually do it and since I've been on the board the last, what, four or five years now, I think it was. I don't know.
Never actually ended before ten?
Yeah, no, we've ended before ten many times, but we've never not taken up that vote and passed it when it comes up to it.
I I, there was one community I worked with, um, the planning board meetings were so long that the the town decided that they were just going to close the building at eleven. Kind of in response to the fact that the planning board meetings were so long and went past eleven, so they get kicked out at eleven. The, you know, custodian says time to go because they don't want to, the town also, it costs money because the town doesn't want to keep it open past.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that was how, that's how they dealt with it. Plant board, you gotta be done because.
We've had a few that have gone past midnight that I've been on.
Yeah, that's what happened.
And it's like, not many, but few. And it's just.
Yeah, it's long. Well, in in my particular case, that in this one, I have a long drive home. Which generally is the, it's the co, it's the better direction because I I live in Newton, so coming west is usually the better direction. But I I was working in Douglas recently and there was a lot of, there was tra, so much traffic on the pipe because that's when they do all the construction. So eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, I'm driving home and there's like, you know, single lane traffic, which if there's anybody else on the road, it backs up. Really? That's when you need to, I mean, but I guess that's when it's least impactful to most people.
And.
Yeah.
At least I get the luxury of living in the town, the meeting I have to attend is going to.
That is, I mean, I did actually work for my, in my town uh, for a number of years and that was nice and convenient. But I I've been working a lot with M C M R P C uh, in their communities. And all of your communities around here.
Funny thing, the C M R P C communities are all in central Massachusetts.
Well, I grew up in Worcester, so it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's not unfamiliar territory to you.
In between, I I, two of my friends from from growing up still live in the general area and I was like, oh, come meet me for dinner in Grafton.
Nice.
All right, looks like we're all back. So, kick a sock, Abe.
Yeah, so I'll um, I'll try to keep this brief just because um, it's getting so late. But just briefly, um, as I'm sure the planning board is aware, um, you know, with the recently passed uh, MBTA zoning law. Um, there's been some updates to the compliance that's going to be required of the town. Um, so I guess just next slide. Um, so, a a lot of these revisions don't necessarily apply to Grafton, but um, you know, basically they've been, based on feedback from towns, they've been changing some of the uh, some of the designations that towns can fall under, some of the rules that are going to come up just because complications have arisen. Um, but basically, um, there's now an adjacent small town category, which doesn't apply to Grafton. They removed a category for bus service, which doesn't apply to Grafton. Um, they've uh, the current affordability requirements are basically that there has to be up to, you can allow up to ten percent at eighty percent. Area median income, it's not a requirement, it's like an allowance um, in all districts and all communities. And then under certain circumstances, uh, there can be up to twenty percent uh, affordable uh, units. In, you know, for certain zoning districts under certain circumstances, which I don't believe apply to Grafton.
Yeah, although on that particular specific topic, toward the end of October, they made a further adjustment to that.
Oh.
Which actually does apply to Grafton.
Okay.
And that is if you have a pre-existing forty R with a twenty-five percent affordability requirement, you can count that towards your uh, multifamily, your three.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's good. Um, and then additionally, um, mixed-use projects, um, so, you know, you could have commercial on the, on the ground floor and apartments above. Um, may be allowed as of right in a multifamily zoning district if multifamily housing is separately allowed as of right. Next slide, um, so this is just sort of a breakdown of uh, the revised categories. Um, basically, similar situation, honestly, Grafton situation hasn't changed much. Um, current unit capacity requirements are ten percent, which is uh, most of the towns in central Massachusetts. Uh, next slide. And as you can see, um, on the current map, Grafton is correctly labeled as an adjacent community, basically. Even though you have a commu- a commuter rail station because uh, so much of the land would not be possible currently to develop as multifamily housing. Um, you are put into the adjacent category, um, which works out pretty well for the town. Um, uh, but for the public, that only really changes um, where the district can go. It doesn't change much else for the town. Um, and so, you know, just to to refresh people's memory, um, basically, this law was passed by the state legislature. And essentially towns that are within a certain proximity of public transit in the eastern part of Massachusetts. Um, basically Worcester County and east. Um, they basically have to create a district that is, that has multifamily housing by right at a minimum density of fifteen units per acre. Um, the district must contain at least fifty acres of land. Um, you're allowed to do that through an overlay district, but the core rule is that um, you have to have at least twenty-five contiguous acres. Um, and then you can have separate portions if you want to put it in different parts of town, but those parts have to be um, at least five contiguous acres. So, um, this is basically, you know, just to make sure that you actually are, the town is actually developing coherent districts. Um, and not just spotting it, um, you know, which could be, some towns might use that as an opportunity to prevent the housing from being built. Um, so, that's just the current rules. And, you know, you can require site plan approval, but it can't be used to deny the project or impose conditions that would make the project uh, infeasible or impractical. Um, so this, these are just a few examples of what fifteen units per acre could look like. Um, you know, when people hear uh, higher density housing, they might think, you know, apart apartment blocks, but um, you know, there's actually uh, examples throughout Massachusetts of uh, fifteen units per acre that I think could fit into, you know, different small towns, um, depending on sort of the rules that that the planning board adopts. Uh, next slide. So the the big news is that um, uh, the department of, in D H C D, the State Department of uh, Housing and Community Development um, has put together a compliance model that will basically allow communities, so in this case, it would be the planning board and folks like myself who are assisting the planning board, um, to determine the multifamily unit capacity and growth density. It's this complicated Excel workbook, um, that thankfully, the state has actually compiled a lot of zoning parcel uh, zoning and parcel data, um, so that you can basically draw where you think the, where you want the district to go. And it'll calculate how many acres you have, what the capacity is going to be. It's actually quite an impressive tool, um, that I was telling the board earlier, actually reduces a lot of the legwork that uh, we were kind of expecting to happen. Um, and that'll give you an estimate of unit capacity, um, and there will be opportunities uh, for the town to receive technical uh, assistance to walk them through this process. Um, you know, and then uh, that's it. Next slide. Um, so yeah, like, this is basically, um, just a sample of what the compliance model will look like. Um, there's a G I S database with all the parcel bound, with all the parcel boundaries, uh, zoning information, that sort of thing. Zoning checklist, um, which will let you like walk through the different elements of the proposed zoning bylaw. And then at the end, you'll get a uh, estimate of the unit capacity based on your zoning district. And this is good because it'll basically allow the town to tailor their zoning bylaw before sending it off to the state. Um, you won't be hit with any surprises. And my impression is that uh, D H C D will be there for the town. Um, if there's any complications that arise with drawing up the zoning district. Um, just so that the town and, you know, the consultants working on it, um, are able to sort of see this through in a in a pleasant manner. Uh, next slide. Yeah, so this is just um, an example of how Grafton sits, um, with other towns in the C M R P C region. Um, C M R P C serves southern Worcester County. Um, we're working with a bunch of towns on this. So, currently, um, based on the twenty twenty housing numbers, uh, Grafton has uh, seven thousand seven hundred and sixty. Um, the uni, the minimum unit capacity has to be ten percent of that twenty twenty number, so for Grafton, that would be seven hundred seventy-six. Um, on a minimum land area of fifty la, acres, that actually calculates out to just about, just a little bit above fifteen units per acre. Um, and yeah, uh, but, you know, uh, if folks at home want to take a look at that, it kind of explains some of the rules in more detail.
Yeah, we'll put this, yeah, this presentation is up on the planning board, what?
Okay.
Meeting materials for the, for this meeting, so, you know. This is probab- probably pretty hard to read on.
Yeah, yeah, apologies.
But.
Um, so yeah, um, part of being an adjacent community, there are, um, you know, different steps that the town has to meet to uh, to be in compliance with the law. Um, if you're not in compliance with the law, um, the town could miss out on grants such as Mass Works, um, and other state grants. So, that's sort of the the stick so that the town is in compliance with the law. Basically, um, the town has to put together an action plan, um, by January thirty-first of next year, so in just about two months. And then the final bylaw has to be passed and submitted to the state um, by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so again, in about two years and one month. Um, so where where I come in, I guess, is helping the town see through that action plan submission. So, if anyone's worried about sort of doing this in two months, the good news is that um, this isn't really the state asking for the bylaw right now. Um, they basically just want to see that the town has a process to put the bylaw together. Um, and the the action plan and anyone at home can look through the action plan application online. Um, it's pretty straightforward, um, and it's, I I don't believe the town is going to be held to it in a strict way as long as they're making progress towards that uh, twenty twenty-four goal. Um. So yeah, um, basically, um, part of what the, what 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 we want to look, work on in the ne, in the coming months. Um, there will be funding opportunities for the town to work with C M R P C, but there, you know, there might be other consultants available. Um, basically, you know, in the towns that have a commuter rail station, which we thought might be Grafton, they wanted these, they wanted the zoning directly near the transit station. Um, thankfully, Grafton doesn't have to follow that that strictly. Um, but I think the the state would look kindly upon uh, sites for multifamily housing that are, you know, accessible to uh, the transit station, so perhaps if there's public transit lines running to the, to the station or it's, you know, along a major road that is a short distance from the transit station, uh, that might be helpful. And then also just, we have to think about, um, with Grafton's existing zoning, what's the best approach? Do we want to do an overlay district or to actually change the base model to implement, you know, underlining multifamily zoning? I mean, that's really up to what, you know, the planning board thinks is the most practical approach. And then, you know, once you kind of figure that out, we can use the compliance model to sort of figure out the exact dimensions of the district. Um, and that'll all come after we develop and submit the action plan, um, by the end of January. So that's basically it. Um, if you, oh, I'm sorry, Eve.
It's okay.
Um, so if you want to learn more, or if you have any questions, either the planning board or any members of the public, you can reach out to me at uh, G Trevor at C M R P C dot org. Um, I thought it was supposed to update, but you can uh, what's the, it's planning D E P, Planning Department at Grafton M A dot gov.
Yeah, so because I'm a temporary town planner, we thought, so when we, when we post this, if it hasn't already been changed, we'll just change that to the plan, general planning department. So whoever is the town planner and the rest, and Natalia and the planning department will get it. So you can use this email address for now, uh, but we'll, we'll change it when we post it.
Yeah, and uh, you know, this, this will be a multi, like, you know, two, only two years, but it will be a multi-year process, so, um, I think in the immediate future, you know, people shouldn't be concerned about this January deadline too much. It's pretty administrative.
Yeah, it's okay.
That might be.
Infeasible is okay. They're both equally correct.
Okay.
All right.
Good news.
So if that's it from, if there's no one in the public or the board, um, I think that's it for now. Um, I'll be in touch with the board about working on the action plan, or I guess I'll be in touch with Eve and the board. Um, and I don't see any reason why we can't get that done, uh, in, you know, in the next month or so.
Yeah, just, I I think most of the board has probably seen this, but just to uh, you know, this is some work I've, I I've, I've been doing on this and this shows you kind of visually how we got to be an adjacent community. Uh, with the uh, the circle there with the colors inside of it is the stationary, the half-mile radius. Within that, the pink is all the land that D H C guy, the D H C D guidelines consider, they exclude.
Right.
So the green is the developable station area. Uh, the blue hatching on there is the Title V buffer, which is excluded. So the green area ends up being eighty-two acres out of the five, five hundred plus acres that exist within that half-mile radius. So that was, it was kind of an interesting exercise to see, to understand why we got to be an adjacent community.
Right. But you know, like, fear, you know, I don't know what the board wants to do, but you could, you know, that eighty-two acre area is like, it kind of makes sense, but I don't, you know, I don't personally know what's there, what, what the, what the mood, mood is on that.
Yeah, so just thinking ahead. Um, I I've been tinkering around with that compliance model. And the, we actually have several existing zoning districts in Grafton that could be considered to satisfy the uh, the M B T zoning requirement. Uh, the first one I'll mention is the, it's currently shown on the diagram as a, it's the eight, eight Pine Street, for those of us who know, the G S X apartment development. And actually, if I, yeah, the next side, there's so, so this depicts some land ownership changes that have taken place since after the data, M B T A, their D H C D did all their calculations based on F Y twenty-one assessors data.
Right.
But this green area here was, is currently under development for a mixed-use development, including three hundred and seventeen dwelling units. The, it's, it's a forty R, it's a, it's a forty R overlay district.
Okay.
The compliance model calculates the density of that, the maximum density at approximately seventy units per acre.
Oh, wow.
The actual development going in there is thirty-five units per acre, but the important, the important thing, this is, like I said, it's a forty R with a twenty-five percent affordable requirement.
Right.
The October change to the guidelines brought that into compliance with with the uh, M B T A zoning. So that's nine acres.
Right.
That, except for the size, uh, uh, fully meets the requirements. So, and it gives us, like I said, that, that calculates out to seventy units per acre in the compliance model.
Right.
We have another forty R uh, down in South Grafton, the old Fisherville mill site, which is about ten acres, which also would comply.
Oh, wow.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't run that into the model because there's a, there's a complication regarding property tax parcel boundaries that would have to be, it requires some manual work to get that to fit into the model.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's, 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 there's another, and then, just to complete the description, we have four village mixed-use districts. Um, which allow by right eight units per acre of multifamily. Which sounds like it's, well, we can't consider that, but we actually can because we can, if we take the seventy units per acre from the forty R up by the train station. There is basically a surplus of units there that can then be added to zoning uh, elsewhere. So if we take a certain amount at eight units per acre, combine that with the seventy units per acre with existing zones, possibly with some tweaking of our zoning rules. Uh, because I'm not totally sure that.
Yeah.
Be a muse, fully get there. But there's a, there's a very real potential that we can leverage existing zoning districts with at most minor changes to the rules to bring us to the overall density of fifteen units per acre and a twenty-five acre contiguous piece.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
That requires further exploration.
Yeah.
Don't need to nail that down right now, but there is that potential.
You, you can use a, a parcel that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do you mind?
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
Can, you can even, you can use a parcel that doesn't yield fifteen units per acre on that particular parcel as.
Right. Right, so what they do, the, the compliance model allows you to, in, in one model, it allows you to analyze up to five separate zoning districts. And you can even have more. They just say, well, if you have more than five, you gotta, you gotta run another compliance model, but presumably you would aggregate all that together.
Right.
What it does is for each of the, for each of the zoning districts that you include in the model, it counts up the acreage, the unit capacity of that zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
And then it adds it all up. So it takes the sum total of the acreage of all your districts, the sum total of the unit capacity that's worked out for each district.
Mm-hmm.
And if in the end, you divide it out and you get fifteen units per acre, it works. You're, you're in compliance.
That's great. Well, that, yeah, I mean, that, yeah.
And one other point for us to consider, uh, again, this is, we don't have to work this out. We've got two years to work this out. But within, you know, in, in close proximity to the station, we've got the GSX development I mentioned. That's what, that's completely within the station area. We've got a village mixed-use development that's partially within the station area.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, no, it's not. It's near the station area.
Mm-hmm.
But there's, there's a hundred units of multifamily, more than a hundred units of multifamily going in there. Uh, so just between those two, we are achieving the objective of three A, which is to get multifamily units built close to a T station.
Mm-hmm.
So we're actually achieving a good portion of that objective with what we've already got on the books.
No, that, that's, that's really good to hear.
There's, the, we have a lot of flexibility. We have other areas in town, other zones in town that.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a, there's an undeveloped, uh, residential multifamily zone, which multifamily there is completely by special permit.
Mm-hmm.
But if we were to take that, say, a portion of that zone, like a twenty-five acre portion of that, and rezone it for multifamily by right at fifteen units per acre, uh, that would also be another way of helping us to me. And there, there are probably several other parcels in town that we can look at to include in multifamily by right zoning.
No, that's.
We've got a fair amount of flexibility to work with here.
Yeah. No, that, that's really impressive. Um, and the other thing, you were talking about the parcel changes, um, my understanding is D, uh, DHCD is going to be pushing updates to the model as, cause obviously this is a multi-year process, so as they get new parcel data, it should come, I don't, you know, I don't know the timeline for that, cause it just got, just got released, but hopefully, when new parcel data is released, uh, it'll be updated, cause obviously towns are gonna be looking at this for a couple of years.
Yeah, but the, the interesting, interesting observation from that perspective of our station area.
Yeah.
Is that we've got two parcels that have changed ownership and basically swapped their, uh, their status.
Mm-hmm.
Excluded or included.
Oh.
Um, and there's another one that's expected to be, to, to be turned into a developable land sometime in the not-too-distant future. Even with those changes, we're still under one hundred unit, one hundred acres of developable station area. So those changes do not elevate us from adjacent community to commuter rail community.
Yeah.
Farther down the road.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how DHCD is gonna treat future changes, um.
Yeah.
I was telling Eve, like, we don't know what, how the state law could change. Um, my, my guess is DHCD would kind of approach that on a case-by-case basis. Um, but, you know, obviously, that's probably not just gonna be the case in Grafton that these, that these statuses change, so who knows? Cause current, currently, the main, the main concern is the timeline. They want sort of the places with transit to do it within, by the end of next year. Um, so obviously, you guys have an extra year. Um, or I guess, no, so even, even towns with the stations have to do it in, it's twenty twenty-four. It's really only if you're on like a metro line, if you're on like a subway line.
The, the rapid transit.
Right, the rapid transit. Um, that would really be the only time, like, substantial change.
Yeah, the only thing I've seen in the DHCD guidelines is in terms of whether your community's status could change, your category could change. If they build a new T station in your community, that might change your community category. But if, as hypothetically could happen in Grafton, if you are an adjacent community and some excluded land gets sold and turned into developable land, if that gets you up above the one hundred acres within the stationary threshold, you become a commuter rail community, although your percentage of, your percentage of MBT is something that has to be within the stationary is not zero, but it's still fairly low.
Right.
At, if you're just over a hundred acres.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if that, if, if five years from now we got to the point of having more than a hundred acres of developable station area, if that would change us, our category, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is the cat, hopefully, the category is kind of frozen as to where we are now.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I hate to think that they'd get, they'd make it, they'd make it a moving target that we.
Yeah, that, I'm worried about that, Dave. I, I, uh, it seems to me that maybe the thing to do is to act now and get, ma- meet the requirement and then go away.
Yeah, what, what.
Because otherwise, it's a, it's a perpetual moving target.
My hypothetical worry is we achieve full compliance by twenty twenty-four as an adjacent community, and then in twenty twenty-seven, all of a sudden, they decide we are now a commuter rail community and we have different standards to meet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, can we fall out of compliance? And I would, I would like to think that once we've achieved compliance, we stay there.
Yeah, I, I, I can't say, but, I mean.
I don't know if DHCD has even thought about that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either.
I'm not sure I want to ask them that question.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think at least for this current process, I would, I would feel confident in just stay, you know, assuming that, that, uh, Grafton's gonna be counted as an adjacent community, cause it, it is all based on the twenty twenty data.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about that in terms of us meeting our objective by the end of twenty twenty-four. I'm not, I'm not at all worried about that.
My, my guess is they would give you a couple of years to figure it out, at least if that, if that status did change, I'd hope. Well.
You, you never really know when it comes to the state, though.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so Dave, what, were, were you saying that we might be able to, uh, comply without, uh, having to get any town meeting votes?
It's conceivable. I, I haven't done enough, I mean, particularly what I, but I haven't read carefully enough the, uh, the rules and regulations around the village mixed use. I wanna, uh, I'd, I'd wanna make sure that when we, that we can legitimately claim that you can do simple multifamily by right, you know, without any restrictions, that would be a problem for the compliance model. I don't know, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at it carefully enough, and I haven't explored all the possible combinations of what we might do, but.
Right.
It's within the realm of possibility that our existing zoning turns out to be fully compliant. Or at the worst case, can be made compliant with relatively minor tweaks that were likely not to be objectionable.
Right.
On the other hand, if we wanna create a whole new zone, which we might decide we wanna do,
Mm-hmm.
that could be more work, but we might in the end, after looking at all the op, at all, all the alternatives, we might decide that's really what we wanna do.
And it might, it might simplify things and it might, you know, put fears of changing status, you know, maybe make you a little more confident facing that. Um, if you, if you wanna like, put that all, like, put, put more in the station area.
Yep, so. As, as you can tell, I've been, I've been spending more time with this than.
It's, it's really impressive. I mean, I've, it's, it's an intimidating, it's an intimidating, you know, situation, but I'm, I'm happy that, uh, you are tack, trying to tackle it. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot to put together.
I mean, the, the GIS part of it isn't, all that complicated.
Yeah.
Particularly with the, you know, the, they, they've hopefully provided a baseline of G, GIS data that, that we can just sort of, one of the things you do is you draw your zone, your zone boundary, and then you, you, you pick out the, uh, the parcels that exist within that zone, and then, you know, they, they, they've arranged it so there's, you know, there's some data that you can easily export from GIS and into Excel, and then in, copy that into the compliance model.
Yeah.
So they've made it, it's, at least I found it to be fairly easy to work with, easier than I thought.
I'm glad to hear that, cause I know, you know, a lot of towns are, are, you know, freaking out about this, so. I think, no, it's good, it's good to know that the compliance model is, is workable and is, uh, is helping you figure out how to approach this.
A lot of towns don't have a David Robbins.
That's for sure.
Well, and unlike I told the board, I mean, what's good about the compli- like, I talked about before the meeting, um, what's kind of nice about the compliance model is they have done a lot of the, the really annoying work of putting all that data together, so you're not really on your own, uh, trying to force together GIS data and doing all, and you can kind of focus on the policy side of it.
Yeah, one of, one of the more involved calculations there is the, the unit capacity where you take into, you know, you have to take into account the size of the parcel, and you, basically, they do it for every, every individual parcel. Size of the parcel, the setbacks, uh, building, uh, building footprint limits.
Yeah.
Uh, open space requirements, uh, building height requirements, they, you know, there's, there's quite a few things they crunch together.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to, uh, you know, to come up with an estimate of units.
That's great.
I did a little bit of that back in March when I wanted, was trying to figure out what the maximum, uh, units per acre would be in that forty R district. The, the, the zoning bylaw does not set a maximum.
Yeah.
It, it sets parameters like, you know, building height and lot coverage and so on. Yeah, and if I assume, and it turns out, my approach to calculation was similar to, but not identical to the DHCD compliance model. Uh, uh, I, I reached much the same result. You know, they assume surface parking only, you know, and I think they, they talk about if you want to have structured parking or parking under the building. In our case, the building has, the building they're proposing does have some, uh, parking under the building. But if I look at that zone
Mm-hmm.
and assume parking under the building as well as surface parking, the lot, the zoning could conceivably allow it to up to about a hundred and thirty-two units per acre.
Oh, wow. That'd be crazy. That'd be great.
Assuming only surface parking to, uh, the same thing that DHC does, I, I came up with seventy-two and they came up with seventy, so.
Yeah.
We're in the same ballpark.
That's good.
But it's interesting to try to figure out how to calculate maximum units.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of a puzzle. It's, it's even, you know, if you, I think if you approach it like a puzzle, it can be kind of fun.
Anyway, I'm sure we've spent more time on this than you had planned.
No, no, it's okay. I'm, I'm honestly really happy to hear that, um, you know, at le- you know, at least you're approaching this, uh, you know, with some confidence and kind of having, I was, I was a little bit worried just, you know, just with the staffing situation, if we'd be kind of scrambling to figure out, um, where to put things, but it sounds like we're in a pretty good spot to get the work started.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in a, we're in a good position here in Grafton.
That's really good to hear. It's a, it's a relief.
For, for some reason, I took an interest in this when they first came out with the, uh, uh, the draft guidelines back in December of last year.
Oh, wow, yeah, I mean, it's important.
Following along with it.
That's great. I think that's it, unless there's any other comments. I really, I really do appreciate hearing all that, cause, you know, I, I'm, towns are nervous, you know, we're kind of nervous about tackling it all, so I think it's, it's really good to hear.
Yep.
See any further questions?
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And, uh, have a good night.
Please just stick in with us.
Thank you, thank you for coming out here and meeting us with us.
I will, um, I'll be in touch with Eve, um, and hopefully, we can get the, uh, I think that application should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, you know, I, I have been making some notes about what we need to put into the action plan.
Okay.
I've done some work on that and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll, you know, as many of us has need to work together. I think the plan, the, the board's probably gonna wanna have some discussion around certain aspects of that.
Okay, um, would it be helpful for me to come in to, like, you know, call into a meeting to move that forward, or?
Probably.
Yeah, I think, yeah, probably, probably our, our, our very next step is probably to work with staff.
Okay.
Present and future staff to sort of, yes, and, and, and maybe US Chair of the Board to, you know, to, to sort of, you know, plan, plan out a timeline for getting the action plan done.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, if, the, I mean, either, I guess you could do December, I could come in, maybe the, the January meeting makes sense.
Probably.
Yeah.
The action plan has to be completed by the end of January, so.
Yeah.
You know, so if we, if we get serious, uh, say, say around the beginning of January, I mean, we can, we can do some background work on it.
Okay.
Through the month of December. Uh, but probably, at, at the board's January meeting, we might wanna.
Yeah, let's preliminarily say, I'll pass on the agenda for our next meeting to, to go, go through. I'll have it on the agenda for the January meeting that preliminarily sounds like that's perfect time for you to attend the, our ninth.
January ninth?
I believe that's what it was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be the Monday. Yeah, that sounds perfect.
So it'll be on the agenda as a discussion item.
Yes.
For next.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much again.
Thank you again, Gabe.
I'll see you around. Have a good night.
You too.
And that brings us to our next agenda item, which are bills.
We had master plan update on the, is there anything?
Oh, thank you. I totally glossed over that.
Another topic I'm interested in.
Do we have anything new on the master plan at least that you know of?
We don't have anything new from CMR PC who's helping us with it. I think that, uh, it was put on the agenda, uh, at Chris's request.
It's been an ongoing agenda and that we've kept on.
Right.
You know, in dealing with this.
I, I think that what Chris told me, he was interested in having the board discuss, and I don't know if ten forty-five and night is the time to do it, but you can decide is to have the board, I think the la- the meeting before I got here, CMR PC came and did a, a presentation of the sort of the findings, and the next step in their contract is to, you know, move forward with, with public outreach and, you know, kind of a path as to what they want to have included in. I think what Chris indicated to me was that he wanted the board to kind of digest what, uh, was brought to the last meeting and, uh, kind of give a general roadmap for where you, what, what the board wants to see in step two or, or the next phase, phase two. Um, so that that gives CMR PC a little bit of guidance as to how to move forward. There, I, they are gonna, they are the consultant and they're gonna do a lot of the heavy lifting with regard to the outreach and the like, but if there was anything that the board members saw as important elements to include, I don't know. Is that generally what you had?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we were, you know, CMR PC was sort of reaching the end of the data collection phase of the project. And then, you know, Dominique presented a lot of the, you know, sort of an overview of the data they collected. And she presented that at a recent meeting, um, asked for the board's feedback on that, which I know I wrote up a bunch of stuff and that's posted on the town, on the website in the master plan project. I don't know that anybody else provided feedback, but if there is anything more that anybody from the board wanted to provide as feedback to the data collection, recommendations for additional data collection, the, I imagine the CMR PC would still be interested in that. But we're probably somewhere close to a point where, well, what do we do next?
Right, so I thi- the next step is phase two, and I, I, I think what Chris had wanted was the board to give some feedback to CMR PC uh, for what to emphasize or how to go about certain
Yep.
uh, parts of the, of the master plan bef- and to give that feedback before they went ahead and started on phase two, but if the board is comfortable with what they, I, you know, I don't know, I'm coming into this in the middle of the story, so.
I know I haven't submitted any comments. I don't know offhand if I had any. I guess it's getting a little late. Late to remember that very well. Maybe the direction of the board is that we are prepared to come back to the next meeting with any further comments or end with the intention that we can hand off to CMR PC for phase two at the conclusion of next meeting.
Yeah, I, I think I would be interested if CMR PC staff had, had had sort of their, at least their idea of how to proceed from here into phase two.
That makes sense.
I think, I think the original contractor, IRFP, I forget, you know, had something in there about what was going to be phase two. I haven't, I haven't reviewed it recently.
Yeah.
But I think in preparation for a discussion at the next meeting, you know, anything that we have from CMR PCs, what they submitted and there's, it's part of their proposal for phase two, maybe it's good to refresh our memories on that. And at least, at least begin, you know, trying to nail down what will be done next.
Okay. Do you want me to reach out to CMR PC or you are all gonna look at the contract? Do you want me to reach out to CM RPC or you are all gonna look at the contract and then give your opinions and then I reach out to your CM RPC?
I would reach to suggest that knowing what CM RPC thinks would be the. Process to approach or switch to phase two would be useful, but I don't. I'm trying to.
I don't know if the contract says, whether or not they can come again. I don't know if there was a limit on the number of meetings they could come to and. How that works, but maybe.
I wasn't prepared to think anything about that tonight.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I. If nothing else, I would, you know, I would plan to. On my part to sort of review what's been done today from beginning up to where we are now. Try to get a sense of what our next steps need to be. If CM RPC has any thoughts. From their perspective, what their view of what the next steps are gonna be. What, what do we do next, basically?
Yeah, it might be worth just having a quick, like, just. A, in theory, email level conversation to say, you know, what their, the next steps are. And then I think we can hold off on asking them to attend our next meeting until we have that discussion.
So you want me to reach out to them before the next meeting so that when you are all discussing it, I can say I spoke to them and this is what they suggested? We can have, that's a part of the conversation.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
Sharing what they said, not what I think. Yeah, okay, okay, perfect. I will reach out to them before the next meeting and we'll plan to put it on the agenda again on January, on December. Twelve. Is that what the next meeting is?
Yes, December twelve.
Okay.
Someone remembers.
Okay, so then the board members should.
Review.
Review it and come prepared to have that conversation earlier on in the night, maybe.
Yes.
So, somebody from the public has told us that the G C T V feed of this meeting just cut out. They're now showing, on the cable channel, they're now showing music and slides.
Okay, well, recorded at the very least. But, anyway, so. Yeah, and if they want to attend our next meeting, they're more than welcome to, but I'm not in the position to ask them to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine. I can, I, I will be the go-between for the next meeting and then you guys can decide what you wanna do for the meeting after that.
I never like told anyone they can't come. They, they want to spend their time.
Yeah, I'm, I, right, I think that they'll be happy to wait until.
Yeah.
Anyway, December's kind of a lost month. You know, it, it's, nothing's really gonna happen until after the holidays.
Exactly.
And everybody kind of gets their eyes, their, their brains back to functioning. So I think that, that, you know, we aren't gonna do public hearings, we aren't gonna do much of anything opening it up. I think we need to look at it and think about it and then, and then come back. And I don't see any reason for them to come until January.
That's the action plan?
Yeah.
All right, so we have bills. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the bills and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. We will pay the bills. We have minutes of the previous meeting, November sixteenth.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Present.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried by the required four votes. Needed only three, but, yeah. Four votes in favor, one present. And on the topic of minutes of previous meetings. It is a little bit gray area from my understanding, but for our November fourteenth. Sort of meeting that we had, because it wasn't formally posted. We did meet as a quorum to open the public hearing. My suggestion would be that we draft minutes for that. In some way.
Natalia has her hand up.
Go ahead, Natalia.
Yeah, uh, I did talk to Ginny about that and yes, we'll put together, uh, I'll put together some. Minutes, but they won't be like official ones, so you can approve them, but. Um.
Yeah.
I'll forward what, what she said after, but basically, yes, we will put some kind of an outline together.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I know it wasn't a formal meeting, but at the same time, we met as a quorum for. The very simple procedural matters that it's just better to be belt and suspenders in my mind. And with Ginny's suggestion, that sounds perfect. Agenda item for staff report. Is there anything that we didn't talk about tonight that's worth telling us about that you know of?
I, I was just gonna introduce myself to those who I haven't already met, but I, I spoken too much at this meeting. So you probably already know me. I, uh, I am here temporarily until the, uh, new town planner is appointed. I, I do think they've had interviews. I don't know where they are in that. Uh, but, uh, I'm here for the duration until. You get a permanent person, which would be great for, for the town. You, I, I, I enjoy every place I work, but. As soon as I start, I try to get out because I, I know that a permanent planner in these locations is better. So I just keep the trains running on time. Um, but I'm welcome any kind of comments and, and input. Um, and I'm only here ten hours a week. But Natalia holds down the fort. If you need anything else, that she knows how to get in touch with me if it's time sensitive.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Speaking of a new planner.
Yes.
I noticed that at the select board meeting the week before last. The town administrator stated that he had made an offer to a candidate for planner. And he was waiting to hear. Hear whether the offer was accepted. Chances are, we'll hear more about that at next week's select board meeting.
I, I did try to reach out to the town administrator today to ask if there was any news I could bring, uh, bring forward. He was not in the office last week or today, so he didn't respond to my emails, so it's not my news to share. Um, but hopefully.
We'll have news as soon as the bill.
Yes. If I knew anything more that I could share, I would.
Okay.
All right, and that brings us to correspondence. I didn't notice anything worth noting. Anyone else wanna mention anything? Seeing nothing. Reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CM RPC. Anyone have a report over the holiday?
Nothing for me.
All right. Any other items which may lawfully come before the board?
I move we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. This is not debatable. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare this meeting the Grafton Planning Board adjourned. Thank you everyone.